Carlisle Regional School Committee Meeting in order.
And I'll bring the Concord School Committee meeting back to order. Note that we are being broadcast and recorded. And I'd like to welcome everybody. It is great to have such a crowd here. We have a bunch of really fun recognitions to do tonight, so we're all really looking forward to it. So, thanks for all being here. We'll jump in with...
Do you have any public comments? Send in the sheets.
Any comments? No? Minutes question?
Seven minutes. Why don't you start?
Sure. We have minutes just from our 4/23/19 Concord School Committee meeting. Do I have a motion to approve those?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We have executive session minutes of 7/24/18, 8:30/18, 5:14/19 for the region.
And for...
Motion to approve those?
So moved.
Second?
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Nine seven.
And for Concord, executive minutes from September 11, 2018, September 25 of 18, November 13 of 18, December 11 of 18, December 18, 18, 1/22/19, 2/14 of 2019, March 12 of 19, March 26 of 19, and April 23 of 19. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposeds? Okay, thank you. Business out of the way, at least the initial business out of the way. We have some fun recognitions to do. We're gonna go and order here. First, recently, we had participation in a civics be and for the first time, and conquered Carlisle. Won the whole thing! Susan, if you could introduce yourself and the team, that would be great.
Yes, yeah. Come on, let's see. I need you guys coming over here. So where, I don't even know where the camera is.
It's back there.
You can talk to us.
Yeah, you can talk to us from there. That's perfect.
We just wanna, we wanna, we're so excited. So we, this was our first year. And I'm from the League of Women Voters. And a small group of the League said, "You know, I hear there's this be that's going on in Sudbury, Weston, and Wayland." And they need enough, they wanted to know if Concord wanted to join. And so, I was tasked with the wonderful opportunity to help build a team. And so, we were able to get two of, well, there were three middle school kids that participated in this exciting time in civics education because, for the first time in many, many years, eighth graders are required to learn about civics. And so, these wonderful people were able to participate, and they really brought a lot to the team. So you guys wanna introduce yourself?
Sure. I'm Sophie Richardson, and I go to Concord Middle School.
I'm Tommy DeBonnie, and I go to Concord Middle School as well.
And then we also had Annie McGary, and she also is from Concord Middle School.
Yes, okay, great. And then, and so, we started to build that part of the team. Because there was one team that had three components, eight members. And then, we had high school students. And then, why don't you guys introduce yourself?
Hi, I'm Gretchen Carr, I'm a junior at CC.
I'm Una Ojacha, I'm also a junior at CC.
Okay, and then, and then, they were joined. We started out with 11 students, and it went down to, I think, seven high school students who participated. And then, and then, we also had a team of adults. And Emily, Emily was part of it, so you wanna introduce yourself?
So, I'm Emily Guever.
And Emily's a lawyer, and she works with the Community Service Order of Justice. We also had Judge John Krotzley, who is one of, he was involved with the moot court, and also a Harvard Law School professor. And then, we had Whit Sloan, who teaches at Bunker Hill Community College and lives in Concord. And then, we had Anita Te- Tech- Techley?
Tech.
Yeah. And she's our former town clerk. So these were team members who were the adults, but they were, but then, every once in a while, they stepped out, and they were like these amazing coaches who helped. And so, we had very low expectations, and we were very humbled. And we were just completely shocked and amazed that we actually won. And so, but I just wanted to have these guys just stand a minute or two, just sharing a little of their experience, because it is our first time, and I think their incentive's really powerful.
Yeah, it was an extremely unique experience, different than anything I'd ever participated with at the high school. And it was really interesting to kind of draw on knowledge that I had learned at the school, through classes at the high school, but also learned from my peers who are older than me and also younger than me. And it was a really incredible event, bringing together and working with kids in the middle schools and adults out in the community. And that's kind of different than a sports team or a club, where you're just with kids, you're in the high school. So it was a really big community-building event. And it was really fun to be a part of.
Yeah, I thought it was a really good way to foster civic engagement because it was fun having it be in like a civics be form. But I also thought that it's a unique experience in Concord and the surrounding towns to have like so many people that are willing to learn about something like that, especially because young people are like stereotyped to not participate in politics and civic engagement. And I thought that's also really important with all the local initiatives to lower the voting age to 17. So I thought it was an interesting time to participate in the civics be.
And just the separation of politics and governance, I think that's something that we all learned more about. And, you know, learning about what was in the Constitution. The focus this year was the Bill of Rights. And they learned about 20 different landmark Supreme Court cases, voting within the town of Concord. And so, there were these various buckets of questions that they were asked to really think on their feet. And, and so, each time, there'd be an adult high school student, an eighth grader. And a lot of times, let me tell you, it was the high school and the eighth graders who were like, had the answers. And then, the adults are like, "Okay." And so, and it was funny. Wasn't that true?
It was a check.
What was it? These guys. But isn't that true, Emily?
So true.
So true. So, anyway, but, and then, we have this wonderful panel. So I'd love you, if you guys take a break, ask yourselves some of these questions. And I'm surprised, you may not know them. And Carolyn, you helped put that together for the League of Women Voters. So, so thank you, and I, and we look forward to future challenges.
Wow. Thank you for...
Susan, for making the fuss over this.
Oh. Thank you for representing us so well, and for not asking us those questions in the class. We're being filmed. That's great.
Definitely next year.
Right.
So Susan, I just wanted to say, I was lucky enough to be at the civics be, and I was the scorekeeper for Sudbury. But it became clear that the score was gonna be very close. So I was triple-checking my scorekeeping. I think you beat Sudbury by, what, one, two points?
I think one point.
Yes.
Wow.
So, it was sort of...
Competition is very...
And I saw that the thing came down to the last round, right? And you guys did great in that round, and that made the difference. So, good preparation on everybody's part.
But also, it was, you know, really, it was a great team. And it was like, everyone checked the egos at the door.
Yep.
And, and so, it was, I think that's why we actually did so well.
Yep.
I'm very proud of the team.
Thank you.
Well done. Thank you. That's great.
Gretchen, I'm gonna embarrass you for a minute. Well, I honored Justin Cameron and the Playbook Initiative when he was here. And Gretchen was the high school student who sponsored that event for us, and she was in France, I think, that she did that. So since she's here tonight, I just wanted to be sure you made that connection.
Excellent.
Thank you for doing that. That was great. Terrific. And the next one up, this is a really fun example of why this is a joint meeting between our Concord School Committee and the, and the regional high school. Because there's been some fun, fun stuff going on with the Rivers and Revolutions program from the high school and Willard together. So I will let you guys come up and talk about it. Hi. Hi, welcome.
Nice to see you all. Thank you so much for having us, and thanks so much for the support you've given to all this work over the past handful of years. You know, for me, one of the most challenging and dynamic and exciting parts of the Rivers and Revolutions experience is our stewardship program, where every Thursday, we bring students out to different community-based organizations to really leverage what they're learning in the service of other organizations in the community. The one that I've been fortunate enough to be involved with is the one at the Willard Elementary School, where every Thursday, for a few months, we go, and our high school students show up, and we enter all the fifth-grade classrooms. And they are essentially tasked with bringing the interdisciplinary, experiential, instructional model, and making it appropriate for the fifth graders at Willard. There is, as we always say, at the end of each session, there's learning happening on so many levels for all of us, for the adults as well as for the students. So we wanted to use this opportunity for you to be able to hear from the, both an elementary's perspective, a high school perspective, and from a teacher perspective, a principal perspective, about what this experience has been like for all of us as ongoing learners.
Yeah, so I participated in the Rivers and Revolutions program last year. And it was just a super special experience for me, as well as my peers and the high schoolers, I hope. So, it was just the way that they sort of helped you sort of rethink the way that you were thinking of things, and sort of in a more mindful way, and how you got to go through all of these essential questions. And you sort of had to find out how like you could view life as a river, for instance. And it was just a really special experience overall and all. And if all of the children in fifth grade, all of the schools could experience it, I think it just sort of spread awareness of how mindfulness can really help people be sort of happy and wear themselves and their community as a whole. So, yeah.
Wow.
Awesome.
Yeah, my, I think through the stewardship program, my sense of self really came into play, whereas I was diagnosed with dyslexia. Like, I really had an early age, like second or third grade. And so, school was always something that was dreaded to me, for me. I always hated it. Like, getting up in the morning was a difficulty because I always felt lesser or subpar compared to all my peers. Never thought of myself as smart or intelligent. And I felt constantly like judged at school for being a dyslexic. And then, once I got to Rivers and Revolutions and through the stewardship program, I really found that confidence and belief in myself as a learner. And then, also being able to teach those fifth graders what I had learned was really special and unique. And I always wished that I would have had that experience as a fifth grader because I think that the concept of intelligence kind of like boils away, and then you look at the multi-dimensional concept of intelligence, and how like it's everywhere.
And for me, back in kindergarten, my teacher told me I was a teacher. I would do like little art lessons while we were doing recess, and she would come up to my parents, and she'd say, "Yeah, he's a born teacher." So now, in high school, I've kind of revisited that with the spirit of my beginner-like role in like teaching facilitators. But with that comes speaking, and like public speaking, and facilitating lessons. And I always kind of struggled with speaking, and like right now, I'm terrified. But, like, it was...
You don't look it.
Through the first semester, I was like terrified. At first, Michael told me to do this speaking role. And I was like, "I don't know how to do this." And it was like so hard. Then after that, coming into the second semester, we did internship. I realized how much I progress, and how easier it is now to speak in front of people and to facilitate lessons. So I'm thankful for having that opportunity to experience.
So first, I just wanted to thank everyone for the opportunity to talk about the impact this program has had on my teaching practice. So I like to call it Rivers, Revolutions, and Renewal because it definitely was a renewal for me. So I have the privilege of working with former students as they come back into my classroom, seniors, as part of the Rivers and Revolutions program. And I watch them truly amazed as they stand and teach my current students in the same place that I stood and taught them seven years prior. I'm, I also watch truly amazed as the high school students teach the fifth graders, and even more amazed when the fifth graders teach the high school students. And each year, my fifth graders say the same things to me. They say, "They don't talk down to us, or treat us like we're kids. They treat us as equals." It's like we're all part of the same class, learning the same stuff together. So this unique partnership has brought our schools together. I think oftentimes, we just see each other as six individuals, separate, isolated buildings. And this program has been the bridge, I think, that brings us together. So Rivers and Revolutions embodies everything that I went into education for more than 20 years ago. Authenticity and connection. And through Rivers and Revolution, I was able to bring authenticity and connection to the classroom through experiential learning. And there's been nothing that has brought me more joy than being part of this community. It has renewed my enthusiasm for and commitment to teaching in the most authentic way that I know.
So you heard from elementary students, high school students, teacher, founder of the program. My role was facilitator. But my takeaway is how we always need to return to being our most humble selves, how we can learn from each other, how we sometimes can have the courage to stand back and allow good things to occur. Kim called Michael when she heard about Rivers Revolution. Michael immediately called her back. There was that catalytic moment that enabled one class to begin, then we had two classes. And this semester, we involved four fifth-grade classes participating in Rivers and Revolutions, where all parties benefit. And we all need to remember that taking a little bit of a risk for innovation is important. Good things happen. But good things happen because people commit themselves and believe. And it is a renaissance of mine, and we all benefit because of it. So thank you to you. I can sustain your glory. Thank you. You're well done.
Wow.
This is amazing to see in action. And we think back to when we started the program, and, you know, where, where we go. And, you know, here we are with, you know, sort of intraschool activities. And it works because the people who are involved in it work so hard and put so much into it every day. And we just got to see some of that right here. I'm always amazed when I walk through the high school, you can tell where the Rivers room is because it's bursting out into the hall, down the hall, onto the next floor. But, you know, it's, it's been a great program. And I'm happy to see we're, we're taking that and putting it to use elsewhere in the system, which I think was always a dream of where this could come. Thank you.
So you know what my next question was? Because after I hear how it's growing at Willard, I call Michael and say, "We're going all three of you." Right? So that's the plan for the fall. We're really excited about that. All fifth graders will get exposed to the partnership with Rivers. And there's a fledgling middle school conversation going on. We still have to take to fruition, but contagious. So, it's exciting.
This stuff is so exciting to see, to see the connections between a high school and an elementary school like that. I mean, this is the reason we get us all in the same room and try to facilitate those connections. So, thank you so much for making it happen. And to students, you guys are incredible. To speak and tell us what you just told us so succinctly is really inspirational. Thank you so much, all of you.
Mr. Goodwin, I'm not sure we heard everybody's name. Would the students be kind enough to introduce themselves? You clearly are an example of how, well, how do I put it? Who has been more empowered by this? I think that's very debatable. But anyway, thank you for being here.
Yeah, I'm Marcus Gerdy.
Thank you, Marcus.
I'm Nikki Lynn Myers.
And I'm Scott Jussel.
Well, thank you all.
Thank you all.
Thank you so much.
This is great. Thanks for being here.
Thank you.
And speaking of providing inspiration, the Concord Ed Fund is here to tell us about the fun things that they're gonna be helping us to fund. So come on up. And if you guys can introduce yourselves to the whole crowd too, that would be great.
I'm Richard Perkins. I'm the co-president. And this is Sean Miller, who's the grants committee chair.
So, first of all, thank very much to everyone. The Concord Ed Fund is with the parents. We got together about 25 years ago. And we raise money on an annual basis. And then, we go to teachers, and we ask them to put together grants for special educational experiences. And then, we fund them. One of those parts we was, the Rivers and Revolution that we just talked about. So we're very excited this year. It was beginning a very, very busy season. We had, we approved 18 grants for $130,000. So just a couple of examples. Challenge success, inflatable, penitarians, ukuleles for extension...
Ukuleles?
There you go. Well, congratulations, and thank you very much. I want to give a lot of credit to the teachers. They put a lot of time and effort into writing these grants. And I want to give a lot of credit to the administration, who really had a lot of influence and helped us get those 30-plus grants this year. So, thank you.
Wow, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Do you want a photo?
Sure. I don't want it.
Thank you very much.
So, we approved 130. Is this for 125?
Okay.
I'm not sure of the process. If I could come back in and give you that official...
Sure, no worries.
Sean, while you're here, could you tell us a little bit about plans going forward for fundraising in the future? So that we and the community are duly aware?
I refer to Richie too, because I know that being president, he's much more aligned with that. We just did a trivia night over in the fall. We've got another big event, I believe, this county fall. Where's that gonna be?
All right, so it's our 25th coming up. And it's to be determined exactly where and how that'll manifest itself. But we do plan to have another trivia night. That was a fabulous event. Mr. Lucy's team won. He's got the trophy of approval. So, so they'll be ongoing events. And I just want to say that Denise, who's Jensen, who's the school liaison committee, she and I met with Lori a couple of times in a very collaborative fashion to see if perhaps, you know, that were some of our projects were better funded by, by the school. And so, that collaboration worked really well this year. But, you know, ultimately, I really want to thank the larger community for supporting the organization so that we can, you know, help, help teachers. That's what it's all about, and teachers help kids like you just saw, so...
Being on the grants committee, educating the teachers about what we CAF is, and working with them around how we build out a grant, it's always been those, you know, mind share. So each year, we try to get in the front in the fall with the administration and the teachers that we can to show them and give them ideas around creating the grants.
That's great.
Thank you.
Terrific. Thank you. Thanks for being here.
Thank you so much.
And next up, we have some state champions in our midst. Welcome to the fencing team. If you guys could come up. And I'm not sure who's doing the introductions.
If we could turn it over to their coach, that is probably the smartest.
So, I apologize. Michael is not here tonight.
Oh, great. Okay, you guys can talk.
You guys take it over then. Tell us a story.
So, I'm the team manager. This is Nate, he's our Saber captain. This is Kenny, he's our FA captain. That's Amy, she's our football captain. So, Nate, on your way.
Yeah, I just have a couple of thank yous to give out. So first off, we'd like to thank the coaches and the parents for helping us throughout the season. And, you know, every aspect of running a team was invaluable, and we greatly appreciate their time commitment. Of course, we also like to thank the administration and the athletic director for their continued support. The athletic department's generous donation is gonna allow us to purchase some of the needed equipment for the next season, which is hopefully going to allow us to train a lot more people to the team and keep going again. So we hope for another successful season next year.
Wow, great. Terrific. Could one of you tell us a little about the final state championship and how it went, and how you pulled together the win?
So, I'm squad leader for Saber, and I really helped out Nate the best I can. And I'm glad he's captain for next year. I'm gonna really pull him in and get him, train him up. And I was really, really good, really well done, Nate.
Yeah. In terms of the championship, the championship was really impressive to me because it was actually my first season on the team, my first time at states. But it was, because we thought we were out like in the, in some of the early rounds. And it was really great how we managed, how the team managed to rally together. And they kind of, we were in the, we were in the loser's bracket, I guess, considering. And we managed to make it all the way up to the finals. And just seeing us come together for that was really great for me.
Yeah, just a long, long, grueling day. Just a lot of like, you know, like a lot of spirit, a lot of determination took us to get through all of it.
It was an eight-hour tournament. I never once saw anyone get tired or...
We have a fantastic community. I think that's honestly one of the things that shines with us. We and some of the other teams actually compliment us on that. And it's just, that's really like, but like I said, that's what pushed us through. Like, we, the men's team had fallen into the loser's bracket in the first round. I think we got defeated that, I'm not sure if I can go.
Yeah. Yeah. It's not great, it's bad.
Yeah, it wasn't great. But then, the tournament was set in such a way that we could actually come back just by plowing through the opposition from there. And, you know, we can always do that, but we did manage to make it through. And it was just an amazing experience. They actually had all of our Saber fencers admitted who, who actually always scored a touchdown on one of the fences from the school, who had no touch or scored at all that entire day. And so, we were just really impressed with them. It was amazing.
Well, I think, it's, I've been to many fencing meets over the last seven years. Two daughters have gone to that in the program. It is an eight-hour grueling process, and it makes it all the way this grueling make it out on top. And you've been through some transitions over the last couple of years. And it's great to see that you're back to your normal glory of CC, being up the heap. It's been a long, successful program over the years. It's great to see it as vital as it is.
Congratulations. Thank you all for coming today.
Thank you. One second, before everybody gets up and leaves, we want to just introduce and recognize one, a couple of other people. You guys can sit down, feel free. I just meant before everybody takes off. We want to introduce quickly two of our new employees. We have recently hired, and who will be starting with us soon, Ruth Grooby is going to be our new director of student services. And Naomi Craykow will be our new principal at Alcoa. And Naomi Craykow will be our new principal at Alcoa. Say anything else about them?
You know, we just tonight wanted to have them come. They've both been through some really long processes to get here and are wrapping up very busy late spring times in their current district. So we thought it was important though to have one final visit here at the school committee level so all of you could meet her, meet them both. They're getting to know each other tonight, which is nice. And we're just really excited. They both bring a lot of experience and a really great attitude and approach to the work with kids and kids are first and really excited to have them join us this summer.
Yeah. So welcome, thanks for being here.
Thank you.
So the fencing team pushed on through, they said. We're very pleased that you pushed on through and joining us, so welcome.
Exactly. Yes, thank you.
So I think we wrapped up all of our recognition tonight. So while we love the active audience.
Yes, we will just...
We will not be one who doesn't want to take the rest of the business. Thank you all for being here.
Thank you for your, and without others, we'll see you likewise.
Tighten up our shot here.
Have a good day.
Thanks, everybody. See you too.
I think the first one's going to work, but we'll do another one anyway. Excellent, wonderful, thank you very much.
Oh, they went all this way. Are there a couple of hits?
Both hit, oh, okay. Which one? Just that, you can move that item up.
The CCHS trips.
Okay.
So, uh, I would entertain a motion to quick change in the agenda to move item...
X-A.
X-A vote, CCHS trips up to now.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So Lori, do you want to introduce this?
Certainly. So the trips you're looking at tonight are both athletic team trips that happen annually. I think if you don't mind taking them in slightly reverse order, I'll invite football coach Robo Show up to talk about his request for August with the football team.
Welcome, no, no, come, come see.
Thanks.
Should I just roll or you?
Go for it.
Go for it. Tell us about the trips, we love them.
Where are you going, when, why?
Well, hopefully we're going August second, third for one overnight up to South Burwick, Maine, which is about seventy miles away. It's pretty quick. But this is a trip that originated many, well, probably close to ten years ago out in Long Meadow, but it has now, I think the last five years has been in South Burwick. So it's an opportunity for kids that are entering the high school up through a rising twelfth grade that are in the football program or want to try out the football program to come in the summer and learn the basic, the basics of the wing T offense, which is the system that we run, that several schools in this region of Maine run as well. So it's an opportunity for a bunch of schools in Maine, our school, and sometimes there's a couple of schools from Massachusetts also that, that join in. It's a, it's a non-contact, while it's padded, helmets and shoulder pads, that's a fundamentals clinic, so it's a skills clinic. So the younger kids can learn how to put on a football helmet, often times a pad, and the older, the older players are working on honing technique and that type of thing. So it's a skill-based clinic that is contact with locking bags and things like that. It's absolutely a great opportunity for all players that are, would like to come, to meet each other, form some new friendships, form some cohesion on the field prior to the official beginning of the preseason in, until late August. So it's definitely a team-building experience. We've had a great history with great hosts. The kids have been tremendous. We stay over in the same hotel. Year after year, we've worked very, very hard on rooming charts and supervision and bed checks and all of it. We repeatedly get comments from not just the hotel management, oftentimes we get positive comments from the butters that are staying in the rooms about to how well the kids are. So they do a great job and it's a really great experience for them. Hopefully it's something that we'll be able to do again this year.
That's terrific.
You have a second trip as well, overnight to New Hampshire for a team bonding session August thirtieth through September first for the girls' soccer team. This is another annual trip, which Fashaylis brings the girls out to build their community and similar nature with a camping experience in Camp Marywood in New Hampshire. So both of those are up tonight. You have a third athletic trip coming to June eleventh that the coach had been out of town, so we didn't get that one until this agenda. But all of these are annual and this will complete all of the trip requests through October first, when we do that one in June. I've asked for a bundle of them, hence our previous conversations. So when you approve that, there won't be any others until we regroup for them next school year.
Are these revenue neutral with the fee or what's the...
There's small costs attached. Soccer's one twenty-five, what's yours?
Yeah, yeah, all, all in costs is right there.
Is that, so that's, the student families pay that? And is it revenue neutral to the district or is it...
Yeah, we, there's no cost incurred by the district.
Thank you, Coach, for doing this and putting all the work into it. I'm sure that the kids have done it previously, are excited about going.
Yeah.
It's a good year-to-year thing and great team building. And kudos to taking a football team to a hotel room. And having the butters, I think that's a great thing.
Locking with compliments. I have the wording I can't connect.
Uh, yes, certainly. The Concord Carlisle School Committee votes to approve a CCHS Wing T Clinic Trip to South Burwick, Maine from August two to August third, 2019, and the Camp Marywood Team Bonding Trip to Orford, New Hampshire from August thirty, 2019 to September first, 2019, with the condition, assigned liability waivers received from all participants.
Second.
Any discussion?
Well, I just want to echo the thanks to you, Mike, for the supervision that you provide because I think that you bring Concord Carlisle pride, that was seventy miles away and everywhere else you go. So thank you, keep it up, we appreciate it.
Thank you. Thanks very much.
So, any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Back to our original agenda, chairs and liaison reports. I think the only thing that as a chair I would mention is super-dun and evaluation forms for those who are due, and there aren't many of us in the room right now, are due tonight. And so this is for all our past members who I'm sure are home watching on television.
Right. Or finishing up, right. Or finishing up their evaluations to send to us. And we can mention too, last week or the week before, Concord Can hosted an event early in the morning that was about building a sustainable middle school. They had someone who was very involved with the Lexington project come and talk about it, a few of us were there. And it was just a good conversation and good to hear about somebody else's experience in building a sustainable middle school.
And I think if anybody who wasn't there is interested, Lexington has a great site for that specific building project. If you want to go take a look at some of what we may have ahead of ourselves. So any liaison reports?
I was just at the same event and I thought, there's also, and I can't remember the woman's name, Lori, who is working in the Active Box Borough project, she's the energy.
Yes.
She met with you.
Oh my gosh.
Kate.
Yes, Kate.
No, that, well Kate's ours, just things related. And...
I can't do it, I know. But anyway, she seemed to have a lot of knowledge as well, as well as a relationship working with the select person from Lexington. A lot of, I think, people that we can reach based with.
Yeah, it's a lot of interaction between those folks around these budding communities around sustainability issues. A lot, a lot of knowledge to draw on there, for sure.
Which really was the point of our last sustainability meeting. So just in terms of liaising out from that, we, we spent a good amount of the meeting with, hearing from Active Box Borough what they've been doing and then outlining our action plan for this coming year. So it's in a really basic draft form, which I'll be sending to all of you to talk on what our goals and steps are for the coming school year.
That's really exciting.
Yeah, a little more concrete than we've been, which is what the hope was by the end of the...
Am spring.
Awesome.
So, anything?
Two, two items briefly. One, we want to acknowledge the two volunteer group and the Rotary for the Class Act Awards Night, and I think it was the last week in April. In fact, we were meeting that night, so we were not in attendance. But it was, again, very nicely done by a group of volunteers.
That's great.
Secondly, in regard to the PEG Access Advisory Committee, this is the Cable TV Oversight Group or Advisory Group, I should say. There's conversation underway at the present time about whether or not the studio at the high school would be permitted by the town, was subject to, I believe, your approval, not ours, Lori, to enable a citizen by appointment to come into the studio for a specific given reason, with a specific person at the studio before the hours of two-thirty in the afternoon. That's not a restriction embodied in our agreement, but rather was a security notation on the accompanying memo, that there would be a two-thirty barrier or barrier for the quote-unquote "public" because we know that certain people have been able to get access. So we're trying to tighten up what, just what that means and who might be permitted to come in by appointment so it doesn't hamstring the studio or the towns and their ability to do some, some production. So we can be posted.
So that's not a formal...
No, this is a conversation underway through the superintendent and the acting town manager.
Okay, correct. Anything else? Since we have no other liaisons.
Since we have no other liaison until we discuss it.
And I'm not, I'm not doing a full report, because doing it every two weeks is sometimes too close together to make it valuable. But just a reminder that it's senior week at the high school. Things are off to a really good start. They started Friday with their day of service and were out in the community doing all sorts of different things. Today they were in for graduation rehearsal, one big practice how to walk in line several times, with events planned all week long, including cannibal trips and another rehearsal and events, evening events, awards tonight, the banquet tomorrow night. It's just a really busy, exciting, fun week, all leading to the climax of graduation on Saturday. So congratulations to all of our graduating seniors. Look forward to Saturday and are glad to see a really great weather forecast. I know right now.
Looking good.
Okay, correspondence. We did have one letter of the region, basically asking about status of the landfill area, what we're doing there and looking for some direction to where some of the documentation is and that sort of thing.
And for Concord, there were just two, one was only inviting us to the Concord Can event, and the other, speaking of civics education in students, was a student reaching out to us to interview one of us. So I'm in touch with him. And that was in our correspondence.
Okay. So...
On to reports.
Do you want to...
Now we get to hear from Kristen.
We're going to introduce Kristen Herbert, our Director of Teaching and Learning, who will set the stage for the report. The Committee of Teachers are two years in the making, ready to share with us tonight on the writing work that they've been doing and plans for the future.
I can't tell you how happy I am to be here today because usually curriculum committees, which span pre-K to twelve education in one subject area, usually our work takes a year. This was interrupted by some things beyond our control. And so this committee and the folks who aren't here stuck with me and we did the work and we plowed through. And I would say we have raised the level of education in our planning to, to true excellence through our work. So I'm very excited to talk about this. The second piece of why I'm excited is that this is the first time that we've taken on something larger than a subject area. So we've done math, we've done science, we did social studies, as you heard, with the civics education. Every time a new set of standards comes out from the state, they're called curriculum frameworks, we look at that and we see how aligned we are to that. And then what we think best practices are, what we want to focus on here in Concord, there's a committee of teachers that are paid for their work, but they give many more hours than what they're paid for. And we've really come up with a vision, pre-K to twelve, of how we want to do this. So when we started looking at writing, we spent a lot of time on, on reading in the past, but not on writing across grade to grade. So we thought, when we did our survey, we thought, writing is really well taught at each elementary school, at the middle school, at the high school. But we didn't have a lot of talk between our levels. So if you were a student, for example, who struggled with writing, you might be taught one way in your regular education fifth grade class. Then you go to your special education class, you might be taught another way to do, let's say, persuasive writing. And then you might go to the middle school the next year, where again, you would be taught one way in your sixth grade English class, another way in your sixth grade social studies class, another way in your sixth grade science class, maybe another way in your sixth grade special education class. So, and on and on and on. So we really weren't building a strong storyline for students who might struggle with writing and all students who want to work on writing. So I think that's what we have now. So the two years has really, have really paid off. So I have a whole committee of people here who actually did the work. We were amazing. And I'd just like for them to stand and turn and introduce themselves and say which school they are from and, and what they do.
Senior Rossola from Concord Middle School, I teach social studies.
I'm Nancy Dillon, I'm from the Rose School and I teach grade four.
Robin Chiketti from Concord Carlisle, I'm librarian representing the K-12 librarians.
I'm Kate Fleming from High School, I'm English Department Chair.
I'm Sarah Bulkers Bulingal, I'm the middle school English Department Chair and also work in the Metcalf Room.
I'm Joyce Carter, the English Language Arts Specialist at the Rose School.
I'm Sharon Hay, I'm the ELA Specialist at Bulingal.
So we have a much bigger committee and you're going to learn more about it and all of our work from each member of the team coming up and producing some slides.
So I was one of actually several content area teachers that were part of the committee. And so much of our conversations in the committee were about not just looking at following the thread K through twelve, but also across content areas within our own buildings and which was really helpful. It was helpful for me as a social studies teacher to understand what was going on in the elementary schools before the kids came to us, which was what we were asking of them in terms of writing. And we met about once a month and, and like, this is, we had interrupted and we met again. But in the beginning, we had a really interesting approach of reading articles of what's currently out there in literacy education. And it was a great refresher for me because I've always been really passionate about literacy education and looking at my content area. And it was nice to sort of revisit all of that and then reinvigorate and bring it back into teaching. So we were looking at the vertical alignment, we were also looking, as I said, at the horizontal alignment across the subjects. And then, of course, get the current frameworks and seeing what we were hitting as a school district wants the standards. And then there's one more slide that's mine. And then we have this quote, which then really boils down to how writing is this foundational skill. And it really predicts success for kids and kind of it drove our work, it drove our vision from what we're trying to accomplish as a group.
Well, as Sia said, what we did is we read a lot of articles and we each read a different book. And we wanted to look at what are the implications for teaching, what does the research say? And nationally, what is really the state of the writing program and most of all, in Concord? And nationally, we found out that it was pretty grim. Looking at grades one, three, and five, they found that fifteen percent of the day was spent on writing. And fifteen percent of the day amounts to about fifty minutes, which seems pretty good. But of that, two-thirds is, was found to be copying word-for-word paragraphs into workbooks. And the next thing that we looked at was students in grades four, eight, and twelve who wrote longer paragraphs in response to reading questions, did much better on standardized state tests, which required written responses. We also learned that sixty-nine percent of the fourth grade teachers nationally said that they spent less than ninety minutes a week on writing. So that was pretty grim. So nationally, bottom line is over the last thirty years, the amount of writing going on in schools has really declined. So we wanted to take a look at what does it look like in Concord? And so what we did is we sent out a survey and we asked people to be a hundred percent honest with us, rather than just clicking off, these are the programs in Concord that we use, which ones do you use? We asked them to totally be upfront and tell us, what do you use specifically in your classroom? And what we got was a massive amount of answers to really wade through. So we wanted to take a look at what does it look like in Concord? And so what we did is we sent out a survey, and we asked people to be 100% honest with us. Rather than just clicking off, these are the programs in Concord that we use, which ones do you use? We asked them to totally be upfront and tell us, what do you use specifically in your classroom? And what we got was a massive amount of answers to really wade through. And we found out some really positive things. Of the standards that exist in Concord for writing and statewide, students have the opportunity to meet 100% of those standards here in Concord. We also learned that there's a variety of methods that are used to teach writing, such as Lucy Cawkins and Empower Six Traits, the middle school has a program. Generally, the elementary school spends 20% of the time during a school day writing across all curriculum areas. And the middle school and high school spend about 50% of their day in writing. I think the challenge for all of us, K-12, we discovered, is we spend a lot of time asking students to write across the curriculum, but what can we do to really help improve that writing? And that's what we're going to be looking at.
So what we looked at and trying to decide how to best approach this K-12 in our district was first, nationally, what's working well. And as is probably saying, obvious that students just need time to write, and they need time to get feedback that's timely and instructive and specific and precise. And so that's what we're trying to accomplish. And some more recommendations that won us K-12 is giving students more time to write, more time to get that explicit and direct and timely feedback on their writing. And that, that writing helps students to think, and thinking helps students to write. And so those two things have to be married. And we do a lot of work directly teaching kids critical thinking skills, and then using the writing to sort of sort out in their minds, what do I think about social studies? What do I think about the book I just read? What do I think about this science lab that I've done? How do I create a narrative from scratch? And so we're really working together with those critical thinking skills as well as writing skills and how to give those students time to practice in class. So, and this is a little different than what Nancy just said. But the good news is, in the Concord and Concord Carlisle school districts, that students do write a lot across all the different subject areas. So it's not just in their English Language Arts class, but in their different content area classes they write. And that they do try to get, they do get quite a bit of timely and specific feedback. Though if there was one way that we feel like we could improve as a district, is finding the time as teachers to give that kind of timely feedback that students really need. Especially when you're talking about at the middle school, where you might have 118 students, and you're trying to read their five-page papers. There's a lot that goes into trying to get that. So we're looking at different ways to not just assign a five-page paper, but other ways to do writing that students can get that feedback that they need. One of the things that was mentioned before that all of the elementary schools use in a consistent way is the Lucy Cawkins approach to teaching writing to the K-5 students. And one thing that's been exciting and new to me at the middle school is looking at Empower and Brain Frames, which has, I think, long been used in special ed and in elementary school, and that was coming up to the middle school as well. And the Empower is just a way of helping kids understand, what is it I'm being asked to write? How do I unpack that prompt? How do I take the resources or things that I've read and then put that, put my thoughts in an organized way into writing? And the Brain Frames are different graphic organizers. But what's different about this approach, I think we're getting excited about, is it's not a teacher handing a student, here's the graphic organizer you're supposed to use this time. It's teaching kids to think. This is what I'm being asked to do. What do I know about the task? What matches, and what organizational pattern matches the task I'm being asked to do? So that's some of the training that Kristen's brought in, that elementary school's been doing, and middle school is looking to do as well. And I know here, and you'll see examples later in our slide presentation, at the middle school, we call it red, blue, green. And it seems to have taken on this sort of magical, I don't know, just thing. But basically, it's just how to teach expository and in writing. That we're teaching students to color-code the different components of a piece of in writing. That red is your claim, blue is your evidence, and green is your elaboration, or you're saying more, or you're so what. And we're teaching kids to think about, in their English classes, in their social studies classes, in their science classes, what does that look like visually? What does the claim mean? What is evidence versus opinion? What is elaboration? And how much of each of those things should have in a paragraph in an essay, et cetera? So one of the things that's been exciting, and it's just starting to take place this year, is while this has been a pretty tried and true method at the middle school, we've started relationships. Laura Regis was one of the people who really came up with this model, went down to a four, five grade district meeting and talked to elementary school teachers. Kate and I have just begun conversations at high school, so that again, students who go through Concord Middle School will know what we're talking about when we say red, blue, green. And if any of you have middle school students that go to Concord, they know it. And most of those kids who come back, I teach eighth grade, and have me read their high school essays, will be, oh, look, I red-blue-greened it. And so it's just part of their vocabulary now.
So, carrying on. The basic bottom line here is that students need to write. The more the students are writing, the better they get at it. It's not enough to just watch it, or think about it, or learn about it, or see a presentation. They have to actually do it, even if it's bad, and even if it's boring, and even if it's whatever. They just need to keep writing. And every teacher in every discipline interacts with students is responsible for helping them to communicate clearly with writing in their subject area. So students need to have regular feedback. It's difficult with the upper grades, especially the seniors at the end of the year write a 10-page paper, and everybody has 25 to 27 kids, and that's a lot to read. But we have been using Turnitin successfully to get feedback in a digital way. It actually organizes how you give the feedback, and it's a great tool. Needle Tools is something that Robin champions and helps us all when we are doing research. It's a great writing platform, and it's being used in social studies and in English and even in science. So it's important to keep the kids using these digital tools, because if they're used to using them, then it's easier to communicate with them, I guess. Okay, so we're going to keep on using all these digital tools. Actually, Google Docs, Google Drive, Google Slides, Google, Google everything. We've been using different ways to get students to communicate their information with writing. They will all benefit from Common Language on the rubrics. It's sort of challenging if you say analysis here and synthesis there. Different ways of using it, although they are in high school and they should be able to understand that analysis comes in a lot of different forms. But instruction and grammar and other mechanics hasn't been consistent at the elementary level. And we're trying to make them more consistent using Lucy Cawkins. And the high school is trying to organize a system as well. There's been some longitudinal work, but I'd love to take a minute to review. Back in 2015, the Social Studies Committee, there was a subcommittee that worked on K-12 inquiry skills. So we developed a K-12 framework that starts with kindergarten and I wonder questions. And there are six strands to this, each one with a different skill set. And it's a really lovely document, because you can see the skills develop straight up through 12th grade. If you click the link, the full document is there. That book was endorsed the next year by the English Language Arts Committee. And then it was also endorsed by the K-12 Writing Committee. And at the high school, we aligned it with the Science Department. So there's a lot of consensus behind this. The K-12 librarians turned this document into another survey. And the results here, we had 108 responses. Forty-three from elementary, nine from middle school, and 56 from high school. However, middle and high school responses were sometimes curriculum teams or grade levels. So even though it's a smaller number, there's a lot of opinion, and there's a lot of feedback here. So the good news is that there were sort of a scatter shot, many, many, there are many opportunities for students to start working on these as reported by these teacher groups. And they often have opportunities to share that work out. The concerning piece is that there's minimalist emphasis on assessment of increased skills. It might be happening, but it's not happening in a systematic way. And we have no evidence that it's being formally assessed. Also, the other piece that's worth mentioning is that there's very, very use of ethically credit sources. And that's an important skill, because that's where a student demonstrates that they've evaluated a source for credibility, bias, those types of things. So that's a gap that we can address. And right down here, there's a link to the full survey results. And shout out to Julie Turner, the new librarian at the Rose School. She did her practicum at the high school, and that was one of her administrative projects. And she did a great job. So future work will be doing professional development on the skills that we know. We've got some gaps in, and that's what will be going on. We've got the red, green, blue model. And we have these skills that we can build formal assessments on. So that's some nice ongoing work.
At the K-2 progression, we have reaffirmed our connection with the Lucy Cawkins curriculum, which we've had for a number of years now. However, she's come out with revised units that are a response to the new Massachusetts frameworks. The new Massachusetts frameworks for reading, writing, speaking, and listening is very intense compared to what we were looking at before. So Lucy Cawkins' new tools and her new publication is something that the district has provided every kindergarten through fifth grade teacher with all the units of study, which was, I'm sure, an expressive proposition. And teachers have not had the chance to probably wade through all of those pages. I'm sure they haven't. But we have now some tools that are helping us to be focused on talking about the same kinds of things when we're working with each other and with students. For example, she's got very detailed writing rubrics that are a way for us to assess student writing. She is, she also provides tools that increase the connection between students and teachers, and teachers and students. Students to help themselves set goals for their own writing, and also ways to assess what they've just written. Can you go to the next one? This is an example of just part of the kindergarten, a kindergarten checklist. And it's broken into, this is a convention's checklist for students, where spelling, the icon at the top, is, she, the student asks themselves, did I, can I read my own writing? Can I sound out words and write them on the paper? Can I use the resources in my classroom, like the word wall? Do I use spaces between my writing? Am I using mostly lowercase letters? And am I using capital letters at the beginning of a sentence? And students can reflect on their own progress. Not yet. I'm starting to do these things, or yes, I can do these things. This is an example of student work from kindergarten, first grade, and second grade. These pieces were chosen by Mary Beth Stevenson, who was a member of our committee. And she could be here tonight, because she has triplets who are graduating from CCHS. And they are getting multiple awards tonight. So this is her slide, but she chose these just to give an example of what the progression looks like that is really based on the writing frameworks and standards. So this first piece, it's short, so I can read it. This is where we're asking, we're asking the reader to draw and write her opinion for likes and dislikes. So this reads, "I like Lily." This is a book character, Lily's purple plastic purse, because she is lal, and she has a purple purse, and she has super cute sunglasses, and she has money. I like Lily. So she needs that standard. This next piece is, and part of the culmination of the opinion unit in first grade is to write your parent or parents a letter to convince them of an experience you'd like to have with them, or something that you would like. And we're trying to teach perspective as well, so that students will start to think about how their message is received and what might appeal to the audience. So this student, one thing is hard for them to just not beg. We say, no begging, you can beg. But basically, this student wants a treehouse and has multiple reasons why this is a good idea. Not only playing in it, they can use their imagination, play outside while you cook dinner. And playing outside is a really healthy choice. This is why I really want a treehouse. So that's the first grade piece. And the second grade piece is based on the book, Henry Hikes to Fitchburg. It's based on a journal entry of Henry David DeRoe, where Henry is, has a wager with one of his friends to, who can get to Fitchburg faster? Henry hiking, or his friend taking the train from Concord to Fitchburg? And so the student, this is actually a two-page piece. I'll tell you what the standard is. The writer wrote her opinion, or her likes and dislikes, and gave reasons for her opinion. And you can see that the, there's more stamina involved in this last piece. It's two pages long. You can see how there's a lot of control over the handwriting. And at this level, we're hoping for organization, a beginning, middle, and end. And basically, I can just read you the part about his reasoning. He thinks that Henry, who was the one who wanted to hike, basically, Henry enjoyed his walk. I think Henry made a better choice. As a first reason, trains release ground-level ozone, O3, which causes the O3 level to rise and is very toxic to the lungs and puts mankind at a serious risk. At that time, was rising to meet global demands. So this is a budding environmentalist. Secondly, Henry was able to get more exercise than his friend by walking. And Henry ended up being, losing the wager, because he was, he stopped and ate blackberries. But last of all, Henry got to snack happily and willingly, while his friend had to work himself out, because his friend had to do all these chores and jobs to buy a ticket. In conclusion, so this is another thing about this progression, is the student has an ending. And the ending for second grade is the writer wrote an ending which he reminded readers of his opinion. As a conclusion for these reasons that I gave, I truly believe that Henry made a better choice. So those are just examples of what kind of work happens in just one of the writing types. This is an opinion, but we teach narrative writing and we also teach informational writing.
I think my colleague said anything I was going to say. Oh, I said that, and then someone said it. So Joyce just went over the K-2. The thing I think it's important to take a look at is how you've seen the foundation at the kindergartens who agree to, well, using some of these programs. using some of these programs. For example, Lucy Cockens, and this year, students are introduced to brainframes with the Empower program as young as grade two. And I'll get into that in a moment. But then I want you to see the continuum as beginning to grade three all the way to grade five. And I think the important thing, and it's part of the conversation we had, was that we need to build the foundation and have that foundation continue to let a lot, Sarah's mentioned, Robin's mentioned, with this spread of using some common language, so that kids can transfer the language, their experiences from one level to the next, and that way they internalize it better. So when you get to grades three to five, we continue with the Lucy Cockens program, which does, just like Joyce said, focus on the three genres of writing. The narrative, the informational, as they get older, we call it expository, the opinion writing. And teachers focus on working with that, as well as what Robin mentioned. As you get to the upper grades, even in grade two, these kids are doing a lot of research now on topics. And what does it look like to write for research? And that's another whole piece that's becoming largely important that we need to look at K-12. And that's what's been so great about having this committee, because Robin's been able to lend a lot of that conversation and for the rest of us to step back and think, "So how are we going to do this, beginning with K, with kindergarten, introduce this vocabulary?" So that's been a huge piece. The research inquiry skills, the Empower skills. So years ago, I used to be a co-teacher in grade five. I was especially a co-teacher until, up until the last couple of years. And Empower was a program for language-based disabled kids. Very direct instruction, teaching kids, "How do we take our thoughts and organize them?" And they came up with six brainframes. So I used to do this in the co-tar classroom with Kimberly and Sue Matt tonight. And then the conversation came, "Wow, this is great for all kids. Why can't we use this for all kids?" And the next thing we know, people started using it. So we've been so lucky to have this training with Empower that takes a look at like six different brainframes that most of us need when we want to write to organize our thoughts, as well as when we read something, to take notes with and organize that. So if you're young as grade two, kids can learn that. There's a sequencing brainframes, because stories follow a sequence, beginning, middle, and end, as well as maybe main idea or categories for informational writing. So we've been exposed to working with that across grade levels. Middle school as well uses that. As well as, this year, because we've had this K-12 committee, Sarah's talked about the red, blue, and yellow method, and the importance of exposing kids in grade four and grade five to that, so when they bridge to grade six, seven, and eight, they come with a working knowledge. That's important. As well as common rubrics. We've had rubrics that were developed here by people that have worked in Concord, the ELA specialists that have been in place for a long time. But what we realized was, is that we were going with revised Lucy Cockens, which ties in with the Common Core. We also needed to update those rubrics. So we've adopted using the Lucy Cockens rubrics. And for the first time this year, teachers are using them. And the feedback that we're getting is, their rubrics emphasize, put double the amount of emphasis on the elaboration piece and the craft. And that is the most important piece of a student's writing, so that gets the most weight. What we're also realizing, though, is we are weak in areas, and we've seen this over the past few years, grammar conventions. So that's a whole other focus for next year that we are going to work on. So anyway, we've had lots of professional development in these areas, but we still want to copy. But the great point piece is, is that we're seeing kids now have a vision, K-12. And for me, I feel great about that, and I think you should too.
So I wanted to show just a couple of examples. This is a report for, this is from my class. And what they did is they wrote an article on a woman that swam the English Channel, and they had to answer the question, "What made Trudy swim very dangerous?" And so we used, I took the Empower training and we used a template. And we had them put their topic sentence in a color, and then each of their reasons in a different color, and then the supporting evidence. And what's interesting about this is the middle school's red, blue, green program is really going to help us. And they came up and met with us. And so we're going to work this year on, "How can we turn this and align it with their program?" So we're really excited about that. And then the Lucy Cockens, they came out and they gave us a refresher class and really emphasized the importance of many lessons. And so this is a fourth grader's work in my class, where she wrote an imaginary trip to the Harbin Ice Festival in China. She had never been there, but studied all about it and just really used a lot of really nice imagery to write the story that came from that process.
So the recommendations for six, eight, just are a slide in from the elementary school. So one of the biggest things is we realize we need to continue to coordinate our writing across all the curriculum areas, which, you know, thanks to CEDM, Social Studies Department, and Cara Bjorki and Sharon Moss before, and the Science Department, there's really been an extended effort to get writing across the different content areas. We're looking, because we're in the digital age, of ways to get students to publish their writing. So there's a couple of different things, especially some sixth graders have really gotten excited about the Nano-RyMo, which was a month-long just creative writing. And for some of the sixth graders, they've done it all year long, so they get really excited about that. We have some online portfolios that are really interesting for kids to look at. And they can go six, eight, in different contests that our students have done historically really well in the district. The common rubrics are important. And one of the things that we, as an English department, did a couple of years ago, is we looked at the ninth grade rubrics and said, "Okay, this is where our kids are going." And we looked at some of the elementary school rubrics and said, "This is where we're coming from. We're that middle school. How do we, you know, move backwards and move forwards from those different places?" So we've been doing a lot of that. And we're feeling pretty good about how explicit those rubrics are. They give a lot of feedback to students when, in addition to teacher comments, "What is the standard that all students are expected to meet?" One thing we're excited about with curriculum is looking at interventions for those students who are struggling in writing, and looking at different ways to deliver that instruction, help kids get more of that time to feedback in a smaller classroom, where they get more practice. And so we're excited about that. The inquiry model of research we're looking at, Noodle Tools. And there was another program, I think, that Elizabeth Hawkwood piloted this year. Yeah. So we're just looking at, what is the best way to do research? There's no one best way, but certainly using all the different technology tools at our disposal. We want to continue to make sure we're training all of the teachers in the middle school that are new to our district. I think one of the things we sometimes tend to do is assume everyone knows what we mean when we say red, blue, green, and then people are like, "I don't know what you mean." So making sure that we're doing that and doing that to fidelity and doing that really well. We continue to collaborate with our fifth grade and our ninth grade colleagues around consistent language, consistent rubrics, and consistent expectations for kids. So one of the things, and I wanted to start with this slide, is we've talked a lot about formalized writing and processed writing. But I wanted to give a little shout out for what comes before that often, is journal writing. And so having, one of the things, when we did our literature study at the very beginning two years ago, the book that I read was about where do you get ideas for writing if you're not given a prompt at a book or about a science project? And the idea of keeping journals for students to process in the very beginning stages what they're thinking, and then from there, pulling out seeds that grow into gardens of writing. And the English department sort of adopted this quote of, "How do I know what I think until I can see what I want to say?" And that's just a sort of a neat reminder, and a lot of teachers have taken into using journals. And did some work with Rivers. He's coming back to Rivers. And what was going on at the high school and how we get those journals going in the middle school as well.
This summer, Social Studies, as Joyce was going to teach us, we're going to have that journal as well.
Right, right. And so this is an example of what we call the red, blue, green. It's an early sixth grade piece of work. The first time it's sort of been directly instructive in how to use red, blue, green. Red is just the claim that a student is making about a character in the novel Crash. The blue is a piece of evidence that comes directly from the text. And the green is the student's thinking about that piece of evidence and how it ties back to the claim. And one of the things we like about color coding it in this way is we try to train the students that in analysis of literature, your green should be the biggest part, because that's where you're really explaining to the reader what you think about the text, and you're bringing all your ideas together. So this is like an October, red, blue, green, example of a paragraph. And then this is an eighth grade, one of the paragraphs in a five paragraph essay, if you're really into this stuff. I put the link up there, and later you can look at the whole essay. But this was a culmination of something my students did just last month, where they've done a two-month study on Holocaust. They've read three different texts, and they had to draw some conclusions about, "How do you become resilient enough to survive something like the Holocaust and take in evidence from the different sources that they read?" So this is just one of the paragraphs from that essay, where we're teaching them that their claim is more general. It's not about a book or a character. It's about in general, what happens to these people, what happened to the people in this time period. And you'll notice different colors are coming in, not just red, blue, green. But we're teaching the students that they have to integrate their quotations. And so the orange, we call the plot setup. So let your reader know what was happening in the text before you just plop a quote in there. Then we talk about, you need to have, oh, this was supposed to be a different color. But then purple is what we call the speech tag, where you're introducing who's speaking, and then you've got the quote, and you've got the pink citation, and all your green elaboration. Then you need a transition to another piece of evidence, and so forth and so on. And then you're always ending with a reminder of where you started back at the beginning. So this is just an example of an analytical piece of writing. And then lastly, one last thing, is we also still continue to narrate. We do all three types of writing in the middle school, whether it's analytical, persuasive, and narrative. And again, there's a link, because you can't see. This was like a three-page paper. But all the students, we read a poem about resistance and resilience. And they had to take one line of the poem and imagine, if it was a story, what would the story behind this line be? And the student's line was, "Stealing a loaf of bread was resistance." And so she wrote and created, and you can see the imagery of the rubric-specific standards they're trying to meet in terms of using dialogue and creating character and sense of beginning, middle, and end. But this one, you'd be able to see sort of the full scope. I don't have the persuasive in here, but it was really fun to share what we did with Animal Farm, is the students had to decide who would have been a better leader than Napoleon in a political campaign, including a whole website and fake news and their political speeches. And the class all voted, who was, who would have been a better leader than Napoleon, and so.
Hey, guys. How's it going? Are you a little bored? That's okay. So we love teaching writing. Anything could be more clear than that. And I know what you're all thinking, "Better you than me." Right, so here we are, we love it. And I have to say that, once all of this amazing work is done, and it is so amazing, then they show up at the high school and they're like, "How do you do? I know how to write." And we say, "Great." And they do. But work that we're doing at the high school is trying to just connect with each other. And I don't know if you've been to the high schools, it's kind of like a variety of fiefdoms. So I go over to Social Studies and I say, "Hello, let's make a common rubric." And they say, "Well..." And then we have a lot of discussion about it. I go to Science and I say, "Hey, let's have a beer." "Well..." So Science is actually working on putting the language of a lab together, so every lab goes together in the same way. Great, awesome. Because you have, so I'm still listening to all this now. It's all, you guys are thinking writing.com, because it is, but it's not. It's also about organization and thinking with how to put things into order when you write, right? That is what a lab report is. That is what an analytical essay is. If you think differently with the narrative, that's what, it's part of it, right? So it goes in every single discipline, and that's amazing. But also, you have to teach them how to do it, right? And they have people to know that when they're making, like honestly, when they're doing a lab report, it's the same as putting together an analytical essay. It's organization and then writing it properly. That's really more art discipline than science, but nevertheless. So we want to collaborate more with these guys with their red, blue, green. Ingrid Stotter actually is working with a fellow who's developed argument mapping, and it's connected to Google. And you can sort of show it on the screen, and it's very, the guy is like 24, he's absolutely adorable. But he's developed this amazing thing, and you can put like the claim at the top and the premises underneath. They each teaches you how to do sub-premises and co-premises. It's all very cool, and it connects directly to everything everybody's just saying here. Rubrics, yeah, we use them. We want to coordinate inquiry, we're supposed to already, we're doing a lot of that. Robin's been such a great help coming into our classes. So we're trying to go out all this, honestly. And you know, I, Kate Lee Devorn is retiring this year. I don't think you guys know her. And I'm writing a speech to give on Friday afternoon, Friday night, and I realized as I sat down, "I have to use every single skill I've been teaching all year long, right? Like, how do I start? Read the audience." You have all the things I teach her, all of that. And you know, it's nothing to learn. Like, I'm sitting in front of my page going, "What?" Right, so anyways, here's an example of a wonderful student, Genesis Fear. And this is what can happen after a year of Miss Lomond in sophomore English, is you're gonna analyze it, you're gonna incorporate your quotation properly, you're gonna put the period here and the quotation mark there, and no other place. And she made some very deep insights here into Solomon by Toni Morrison. And this is our hardest book we read sophomore year. You know, she did an awesome job. And you know, I'm just really proud of all the work that her done. I'm just so proud of it. And obviously, we really care a lot about what we do. And we work really hard to do a lot of research to find out the best ways to do it. So I really appreciate your time. I know you've heard a lot.
And the good news is, I'm a summarizer. But K-12, I think, also. So these are our recommendations that we came up with, K-12. Provide multiple opportunities to write across the curriculum. And I think that's key. There's always a purpose to writing. And it's great to be able to instill with kids, K-12, that when you have a passion, you can write about it. It's a way to communicate. You can communicate about learning. You can communicate to express a strong opinion. You can communicate to analyze literature. They're all purposes. So we give kids multiple opportunities across the curriculum. It's something that we are really looking to invent more. Increase the amount of time that students spend writing. Provide a consistent model in the writing process with opportunities to receive feedback. And develop a coordinated approach to grammar district-wide. And that's what we're taking a look at. I was gonna say, this year, we're almost done this year, next year. Provide bridges in writing. And you've heard a lot about this tonight, from grade five to six and from grade nine. Using Empower and red, blue, green, as well as some other things. That conversation, keeping it open and trying those things out. Using technology to advance writing. Google tools, Noodle tools, Turnitin. More writing, less grading. And that's important, because the more you write, the better you get at it. And it's great to be, for kids to be able to see, "This is a way to express myself and have an audience to do it." Provide training in Empower. We've had that this year to Expository Writing, grades two to nine. We've had a year-long person from Empower that's come and visited us and they've like a coach for us. So that's the key, great feedback from that. We've had Lucy Cockens training. We had a week this past summer, and we've had some continued work with that. Also, provide time for cross-discipline groups at elementary, middle, and high school. And that's been, I can tell you how wonderful that is. Some of us have just met each other for the first time when we've worked in the district for years. So that says something right there. Provide training on the red, blue, green system to teachers of grades four. And we've done that this year. So it's been really successful. It's taken two years, but it's been worth all that time.
Great.
Thank you.
So we really just want to say thanks to all these educators that have stuck with us for two years and read multiple, multiple books and articles on what best practices in teaching writing. And I think we will, we've started to see some results, and we're gonna just reap the benefits of all this work in the near future. Thank you. And I'm sure there's no questions.
I have a lot of questions, but if you have some time, I will. So it was very impressive. And first of all, is that presentation available to us? Where is it available?
I shared it with all of you this afternoon. Or I tried. I was on my phone, though, so if you didn't get it, I'll do it again.
You're gonna post it on your website?
Certainly, we can post it on yours.
Okay. So I guess, let me go back to, there's so many, but go back to the summary slide and the questions that that generates. I mean, the first basic question is, if you want to make more time for writing, what do you make less time for? Because there's, and that's both a teacher thing and a student thing, right? What do you recommend kind of move aside? What, what do you recommend kind of move aside to increase the writing opportunity?
Yeah, yeah, so there's two answers to that question. Obviously, something has to go. Um, so um, you look at every schedule, um, every principal looks at every teacher's schedule. And we make sure that we're maximizing the amount of time. Um, and within that time, you want contiguous time. So it's not great to have, you know, all your time in one week and then the kids don't go back for writing. Um, you want, just like learning a language, you want to write in regular intervals.
But are you getting, having gone through this, are you getting consistent? A consistent set of replies about what will be de-emphasized to make room for the writing?
Yeah, yeah. So, yeah, so what we do on every curriculum committee is we say, these are the things that are, are important. And these are the things that are no longer important. So to use an example from health, um, for example, uh smoking cigarettes, we got that. We really don't have kids smoking cigarettes. And it used to be like a 10-week unit for us in health. So we can cut that down and we can say, but vaping is really a problem. Uh, and you know, so we can add, make room for that. So as we go through every curriculum area, we talk about what we don't need to teach anymore because it's outdated or wrong in some cases. That was true in science, um and in social studies and what we want to emphasize more. So it really is a very careful look at every single area. So I can't say one answer for everything. The other, the other way to do it is you do it smarter. So um, that's why we had the emphasis on interdisciplinary writing. So that writing doesn't just happen during writing time at elementary school or during English class in middle school and high school. It happens across every subject area. We include social studies, science and health in all of that. And there's actually writing that happens even in math class. So we're, we're really looking at maximizing the opportunities that kids write in every subject area, not just in, in sort of the traditional subject areas. And someone wants to get a thing.
You answered my, what I was gonna say. You know, um, I'm, we talk about what's going on in English, what types of writing is going on. We integrate it into social studies. So they're getting writing at different points in the day, it's not just in one class a day. And I think that's super helpful. Also, you know, with technology now, I can assign them to watch a video at night. That used to be that, you know, we studied film strips in class or like a reel to reel in class. Like now we can assign them the video to watch the night before to answer a writing prompt the next day in class and discuss their writing with each other. So there's just, there's different, there's shifts that have occurred um in our conversations, but also in our planning that make room for writing.
And to piggyback onto that, I think where we're seeing writing happening more frequently across the different areas, you can do the quick hit, it's more effective and efficient to do a mini lesson and, and we have the conversation. We've taught this in this skill. And so when you're doing it in social studies or science now, it's practice. And the kids aren't hearing the same in lesson again and again and again. If the teacher might review, you know, you're supposed to do X, Y, and Z when you're doing this type of writing. Here's now your opportunity to sit in class on your computer with your Google locks and do it. And I'm here and the tutor in the classroom is here, that immediate feedback and/or your peers are here. So I think again, we've just become more efficient and we can, can continue to be so. Um, but in, in teaching writing and giving time in the classroom for writing and feedback.
And I think, I think how we teach changes. Like we don't teach the way we did 10 years ago, certainly don't teach the way we did 20 years ago. So it, I think it's a matter of incorporating the writing into the learning activity itself and making that, I mean, this is a hard thing to juggle, of making like the commas and the learning and the book and the analysis all go into writing what they're doing while they're learning right there in the classroom with you. So you, we, we all are involved, the kids, us, the analogy, we all are involved. Great, but we have hit upon it, which is it's a struggle to find enough time for writing.
Yeah, um, how, so related actually to the high school. Because high school suffers a lot of writing, science, a lot of reports in, in social studies. Um, so with the, uh, with moving to a new, uh, new Maho, how is that going to work where you build? Um, is, is there going to be building on those skills, those writing skills and teaching? So the teachers across all the sciences and the social studies, they're writing on content and lab reports. Would they be following the same language, the same way, the same way that, that the information instructor from year to year, so the kids can grow, but the message is not constantly changing? Um, or the way, you know, that they are structuring? So they're not seeing a different template this year than next year? Or this teacher, the other teacher in a different class?
That's exactly what science is doing. My fellow, the chair of the science department would tell you, he wants everyone to all agree on motive introductionism. They've been doing work on that all year long. And the same for English, the same for social studies. And English and social studies wants to do more work together and they have years on to develop in a common language and even a base common rubric that everyone in the building can understand as the writing rubric. These are the base ideas to move.
And is the, um, and, and is the content going to be, um, be graded at a higher level than, um, than the way the kids write? Cause not, not necessarily the scientists will need, you know, will develop this writing skills when they, uh, important skills. But, uh, not as important.
No, they're not gonna grade them in science or in social studies the way we grade them in English. Because we don't teach, we don't teach, it's not about content, it's about skills. So everything that we do is about skills and the writing. We can read any book, honestly, any book at all and still teach them higher order and skills and everything that goes into being an advanced writer. So it's a new difference of the way we grade them in English than in those other fields. I think they're looking more to understand too, you know, which is Washington is.
Well, I definitely commend you on moving towards this direction, cause that will definitely look for students.
Two points on what you were just asking. One is when we started the work, one thing that we found is in the different disciplines, like your example of English and social studies, the expectations of students were very different. So in English, they would have told you, oh yeah, we work with our freshmen coming in on writing a paragraph. And if you went to a freshman social studies class, they were already expecting students to write a five-page essay. And so just aligning that, you know, was really important. And that was at the beginning of the work and now we're so far past that that, you know, it's hard to remember that time. Uh, and the other thing is even though the bulk of English class is on communication, is on, on reading, um, all the other subject areas have communication as part of their skillset in their framework. So science, one of their four areas is communication of science content. So while they're not gonna grade it at the same way that an English teacher would, they're still gonna consider it. Um, and that has become more important in this new set of standards. So the, the communication of the content area, not just the knowledge of the content area. Yeah, so it's a good thing, good question, yeah.
Uh, a question for Kate. Does the high school right now have a writing center?
Um, that is my hope.
Okay, because it seems like most other peer, you know, peer schools around us have a staff writing center. And having had two kids go through the high school, I wish I could say to them, you should go to the writing center.
It's something that we're, we're working on. We do have a social studies and English resource area, and Eko Collaborates actually running it right now. He's doing an amazing job. So um, we are, you know, we're, we're working on it and that's the general goal.
Because to me, it would solve the time problem to a certain degree. And the, the time that kids could go seek help, which doesn't necessarily always mesh up with everybody's schedules, right? Um, especially kids who have things going on after school and, you know, I know everybody just wanna get to school to get help at 6:00 AM, so. Uh, so that's just something I think that might um be a big help at the high school. The other thing is the grammar, uh, to me is a huge piece. I felt like there was more emphasis a while ago at the middle school, especially the eighth grade level, in acquiring those words that you could use um in your writing. Because I think that makes kids much more excited about going out there and doing it. They have more stuff in their toolbox, so that's just something.
Developmentally, I have to say, I have seniors that don't remember where their commas go. And they did all of this with all of these guys. They were not, kind of let me talk, I think there's a moment where it clicks.
Yeah, yeah.
We have, there's actually a lot of online tools for teaching grammar now. It's really useful.
So, and I think someone mentioned it, um, but it's our offshoot committee, you know, like our spin-off for next year. We're actually having a grammar committee to do exactly what we did, which is there are pockets where grammar's taught. In fact, in English, but also in world language.
Yep.
Um, and so we're gonna look at the K-12 continuum on that next year.
That's awesome. Great, many of these people are gonna be on that committee, cause they just love committee work.
Something I wanted to say that I'm excited about at middle school. Um, next year we're trying with the reconfiguration in sixth grade, a new model and a new schedule, where students um will have this, this block of time that we're calling the RCI block um right now. And all students will have like a fundamental study skills course at the first term. But then second and third term, um, based on what students need and what students want, we'll have opportunity to provide both intervention and enrichment. And I'm hoping writing will be, will be one of the offerings that, that kids will get. Um, and if that's successful, we can get work that will pair them in any grade too. Um, because one of the things I have seen is that there are lots of kids who love to write and they're being forced to write things they're not necessarily interested in writing. And so these RCI blocks would be provide that opportunity that they're now doing during lunch or during after school. As they get older and older, they don't have lunch and after school to devote to it the way a sixth grader does so enthusiastically. So I'm excited about where we're headed with that in the future.
This has been a wonderful presentation. Are there any final things you wanted to mention to us before we wrap it up?
It's been a pleasure working with these wonderful people.
This is extraordinary. I wish we could talk all night and looking forward to it.
I want to talk for another minute.
Take it into.
And ask that on a return visit, Kristin, we talked a little bit more about the K-12 uh, and especially the eight-nine bridge with Carlisle.
Yep.
And does it necessarily start at eight-nine? Maybe the true bridging does, but I think the conversations probably start earlier across the districts.
Yeah, so, yeah, it's a great question.
So again, I, I know we don't have time tonight, but I hope it's a read.
The short answer is that we share all these presentations with them. Over the summer, I go over and meet with the administrators from the, from Carlisle, um, the middle school principal. In particular, um, sometimes one of the content area teachers, if, if that's a particular area. So we did science, we did social studies and so forth. So they know what we're planning to do in Concord and can sort of align with us if they want to and, or at least know where there are differences. So we communicate, um, we've always invited them to be on the committees as well. Um, usually our schedules don't work out, but, but yeah, there's a good communication.
And I hope we bring Carlisle information back here as well and have that circulate. Whether there are differences, that's fine, but let's know them.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Who's, I'm following up on that. Thanks for doing that. Who's your primary contact typically at the Carlisle school?
Who do we usually use?
Who's your primary point of contact?
Uh, well, typically it's been, uh, typically it's been the middle school principal who, she and I were um principals together when we were in Brooklyn.
Okay.
Yeah, carried, so, but we've reached out on different subject areas to individual teachers and also to the superintendent.
And the other question is, how, somebody here mentioned that the CEMS kids came in pretty well, ready for writing at the high school. How are the Carlisle kids coming in? Are they as ready or are they not as ready?
Yeah, it's a question that Carlisle asks all the time. Actually, I was just sitting with Carlisle superintendent, we were talking about math and that area. Um, because we do use different techniques, so what's stronger? And it's actually a sort of a great pilot for us if something's going well there or something's going well there to share ideas across. So um, I wouldn't say, you can't make the sort of, let's say Carlisle is stronger than this in this and Carlisle.
I wouldn't say stronger, just less prepared, let's say for this.
Yeah, and so we just share that information as, as we, for example, in science, we look at the placements, the scores and so forth and we say, okay, this is good.
Your answer was sort of broadly, I'm saying specific.
So in English, um, we actually talked to the Carlisle English teacher um in eighth grade and we talked about the kinds of writing she's teaching them, the kinds of writing they'd be doing at high school. She's actually changed what she does with them. And so they come in on a much more even scale with the conference students. So that's been a great, a great accomplishment.
Thank you. Well, we can't thank you enough for all the work you've done on this. It's one of the things that makes our district so special.
Thank you.
And thank you. Take a five-minute break.
Okay.
Good to see you, how are you? Uh, junior and freshman. Yeah, yeah, guys graduating at your scare now. Thank you so much.
I try to enjoy it, so it's important to do our typical tests in any subject. So you're trying to try to work, yeah. So you're never taking a multiple choice. So maybe we always break it, so we're delivering that. Yes, we always have to change both sides of the equation. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you for this work.
Let me get you a mic.
We've got loads of scripts for our. All this stuff we said we do.
Oh, is it? Yeah.
I was like, oh, wow. So I didn't tell me to start right. I was like, oh, wow. So I didn't tell me to start right. I was like, oh, wow. So I didn't tell me to start right. I was like, oh, wow. So I didn't tell me to start right. I was like, oh, wow. So I didn't tell me to start right. I was like, oh, wow. So I didn't tell me to start right. I was like, oh, wow. So I didn't tell me to start right. I was like, oh, wow. So I didn't tell me to start right. I was like, oh, wow. So I didn't tell me to start right. I was like, oh, wow. So I didn't tell me to start right. I was like, oh, wow. So I didn't tell me to start right. I was like, oh, wow. So I didn't tell me to start right. I was like, oh, wow. So I didn't tell me to start right. I was like, oh, wow. So I didn't tell me to start right. I was like, oh, wow. So I didn't tell me to start right. I was like, oh, wow. So I didn't tell me to start right. I was like, oh, wow. So I didn't tell me to start right. I was like, oh, wow. So I didn't tell me to start right. I was like, oh, wow. So I didn't tell me to start right. I was like, oh, wow. So I didn't tell me to start right. I was like, oh, wow. So I didn't tell me to start right. I was like, oh, wow. So I didn't tell me to start right. I was like, oh, wow. So I didn't tell me to start right. I was like, oh, wow. So I didn't tell me to start right. I was like, oh, wow. So I didn't tell me to start right. I was like, oh, wow. So I didn't tell me to start right. I was like, oh, wow. So I didn't tell me to start right. I was like, oh, wow. So I didn't tell me to start right. I was like, oh, wow. So I didn't tell me to start right. I was like, oh, wow. So I didn't tell me to start right. I was like, oh, wow. So I didn't tell me to start right. I was like, oh, wow. So I didn't tell me to start right. I was like, oh, wow. So I didn't tell me to start right. I was like, oh, wow. So I didn't tell me to start right. I was like, oh, wow. So I didn't tell me to start right. I was like, oh, wow. So I didn't tell me to start right. I was like, oh, wow. So I didn't tell me to start right. I was like, oh, wow. So I didn't tell me to start right. I was like, oh, wow. So I didn't tell me to start right. I was like, oh, wow. So I didn't tell me to start right. I was like, oh, wow. So I didn't tell me to start right. I was like, oh, wow. So I didn't tell me to start right. I was like, oh, wow. So I didn't tell me to start right. I was like, oh, wow. So I didn't tell me to start right. I was like, oh, wow. So I didn't tell me to start right. I was like, oh, wow. So I didn't tell me to start right. I was like, oh, wow. So I didn't tell me to start right. I was like, oh, wow. So I didn't tell me to start right. I was like, oh, wow. So I didn't tell me to start right. I was like, oh, wow. So I didn't tell me to start right. I was like, oh, wow. So I didn't tell me to start right. I was like, oh, wow. So I didn't tell me to start right. I was like, oh, wow. So I didn't tell me to start right. I was like, oh, wow. So I didn't tell me to start right. I was like, oh, wow. So I didn't tell me to start right. I was like, oh, wow. So I didn't tell me to start right. I was like, oh, wow. So I didn't tell me to start right. I was like, oh, wow. So I didn't tell me to start right. I was like, oh, wow. So I didn't tell me to start right. I was like, oh, wow. So I didn't tell me to start right. I was like, oh, wow. So I didn't tell me to start right. I was like, oh, wow. So I didn't tell me to start right. I was like, oh, wow. So I didn't tell me to start right. I was like, oh, wow. So I didn't tell me to start right. I was like, oh, wow. So I didn't tell me to start right. I was like, oh, wow. So I didn't tell me to start right. I was like, oh, wow. So I didn't tell me to start right. I was like, oh, wow. So I didn't tell me to start right. I was like, oh, wow. So I didn't tell me to start right. I was like, oh, wow. So I didn't tell me to start right. I was like, oh, wow. So I didn't tell me to start right. I was like, oh, wow. So I didn't tell me to start right. I was like, oh, wow. So I didn't tell me to start right. I was like, oh, wow. So I didn't tell me to start right. I was like, oh, wow. So I didn't tell me to start right. I was like, oh, wow. So I didn't tell me to start right. I was like, oh, wow. So I didn't tell me to start right. I was like, oh, wow. So I didn't tell me to start right. I was like, oh, wow. So I didn't tell me to start right. I was like, oh, wow. So I didn't tell me to start right. I was like, oh, wow. So I didn't tell me to start right. I was like, oh, wow. So I didn't tell me to start right. I was like, oh, wow. So I didn't tell me to start right. I was like, oh, wow.[714.14]
Agreement, it starts with the school committee instead of starting with type of regional school district. Another thing, talks about assessments before talks about budget. It doesn't follow an order. You follow the order that was developed back in the sixties, fifties and sixties. We've been working with the department with their encouragement is to reorder makes the order make sense. Once you make a change, then order it so it makes sense and order what we're going through. Seek preliminary, you have to seek preliminary after you come up with an amendment agreement, you have to seek preliminary approval from the Commissioner of Education basically through his staff. We work with Christine Lynch and Ruth Hirsch in the department. Voted amendment agreement in each town. It's voted each town before that, the school committee would need to approve it and vote and send it out.
So, a couple of additional comments. If we wind up working with your regional agreement committee, we're not reinventing the wheel. So, we're using a combination of language that's still valid from your agreement and we're also bringing in language from previously approved DESE agreements. And then, of course, the committee with our help helps make that language yours, helps make it reflect Concord Carlisle. So, we're not, I just want to make the point, we're not writing an agreement from scratch. It's really, and a strong editing process is the way I'd describe it. The other point I'd make is that there is a place and a time in this sequence where it's important that the Concord Carlisle attorney and also the attorney for the town of Concord and the attorney for the town of Carlisle also review the document prior to, actually, we like to have that done prior to asking the Department of Education for their review, so that those local changes are already built in.
A number of times what happens is when you go to a town meeting and it's under warrant or amended, the first somebody's going to ask their town council, should we sign this one? So, we work with them. So, they've voted amendment agreement in each town, then they seek approval, final approval from the Commissioner of Education who signs off on it. We recommend that this, you can set up any way you want, but we recommend that in an amendment committee would be two members of school committee, one from each town, two select persons, one from each town, two FinCon members and then four members at law, two from each town. So, we recommend the committee can appoint those, you can have the right to appoint them as an amendment committee to do that. You can make any combination. We have found that works well because then you've got your townspeople involved in the process and going back to it. So, if there's any questions, it's highly recommended that the members on the school committee come back to the school committee and say, here's what we're doing, select member, FinCon. So, when you get down to the end, everybody's had their input and they know what has been Member towns voting, selectmen place an article on the warrant, reanual or special town meeting, voters approve or disapprove the amendment agreement. It's an up or down vote. You can't, one town can't make change, another town, it's an up or down vote. If it gets voted, they don't vote it, then you go back to the table and find out what the problem was and then you can try to fix it so that they wouldn't want to agree to it. If approved, sign an agreement and certify votes, you send to DESE and then the Commissioner approves the amendment agreement providing some compliance with state laws. Now, Jay?
Yeah, one of the other things that we can help with, if it's needed, is we've often done informational meetings in the two towns prior to the town meeting. So, invite the stakeholders, invite the public, invite your FinCon or your other commissioners and we can talk about, in a summary form, this is how the old agreement was like, this is what the new agreement was like, and this is the work that the regional agreement committee did. So, sometimes that, that can help get everybody informed prior to town meeting.
We've been asked by District Jay and I, working with, to be at their town meetings here in June, so they'd like us to come in and give them questions. Technically, we can explain those, so we provide those services. State laws, regional agreements must address all sections as outlined in MGL Chapter 7114B. And all required sections must be up to date and correct where necessary. There are requirements, there's certain things that have to be in the agreement. You can then write however you want to within guidelines from the department. Example, if you're going to amend to bring in another town or you want to expand the region or town jointly, there's a process you have to put in the agreement to anticipate that. And you have your wording however you want to work it, but they still have to approve it. Community relations plan, and Jay, we've just mentioned public forums where government members communicate, school committee communicates, the community get the information out. One of the things is through your media here that can get out so they know what's going on with those changes that you're looking at in the meetings. There can be significant issues. If you take a look at your assessment and your school committee membership, have to look that carefully, make sure you're in compliance. Consultants, why would you have consultants with process, with me with the process, laws and regulations, successfully, as with DESE, we have very good relations with the department and helped develop project improvement track lately with the district, so we have to be very closely with districts to do that. In fact, your business manager was in a previous district where we had done a process with them and he's familiar with our work. So, we say if the reflection, member process requires careful thought, you've developed a significant community relations plan. Length of time can, it depends. A lot of times, we recommend starting a meeting once a month with people and then depending when things get close, maybe twice a month, depending what we have to do and we have to get approval from the department. So, we would never recommend taking anything to a town meeting or even to back to the school committee unless we know it's going to get approved by the department. That's in their, that's in their regulations actually. Before you send it out to the towns, they go to give a preliminary approval, send the towns approval, they recommend the Commissioner to sign. And recommend you see legal seal of the process. And we work very closely with them.
Just throwing one other thing. Yeah, and as we go through the sections typically in a process like this, there are some sections that really flow pretty easily. By way of example, how a regional district incurs debt is largely a statutory process. So, putting that in is, is kind of moves right along. On the other hand, sometimes finance matters and also school committee composition and governance can be issues where rewriting that section can take, take a few meetings, especially if the changes are, are significant. So, there's, the pace of it changes a little bit depending on the complexity of the, of the issue you're trying to solve.
We also recommend that the superintendents, the business manager service, ex officiating members, because sometimes this research needs to be done that we do. Part of our services, if we would do the agenda, you would have to provide someone to take the minutes, but we would then, our general idea is that we work with the business manager superintendent saying, here's where we are, we're directing there certain things and then we proceed and take care of that so they're not bogged down with that. As former superintendents, we know what it could be. So, I think that's what we wanted to present to you, try to keep it to the point and we'd be glad to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you for the presentation.
By the way, we enjoyed the other pieces of the presentation.
And thank you for waiting so long.
Honestly, both of us are superintendents. I mean, to see all the students and the teachers, it's really nice to see.
And you're going to go home and revise this presentation to reflect what you learned. So, let's open it up for questions.
Yeah, thank you very much for coming. So, your presentation is fairly mechanical. In other words, this is the process and this is the objective. Before you, before we engage in that, do you offer guidance as to whether it's necessary and what? Or are you assuming we will decide whether an amendment is necessary and then guide us through the process of amendment?
Well, probably both, because the first thing is we know when we go through that agreement, what things are not up to date and we would say, these things seem to be in that agreement, these are parts of it, and maybe give you some recommendations in that. And then the same piece is you then would come across and say, hey, we'd like to see this in our agreement. And we can work with you saying, yeah, you can put that in, it'll be approved. Or we've had a case, some district want to put something in, we know it's not going to get approved. Again, they have to approve it all, so we work with them that. And they're very particular on wording that you have to put in. If you're going to go by, anything that you're going to do by students, you're going to define, what students do you mean? October 1 of what? Are these, are the students that you're financially responsible for or students that are actually in your building? See, it's a lot of definitions which you don't think about, but we've been working closely with them and we know it's going to be defined.
What I would add to that is that the, your assessment of whether or not an amendment is necessary here in Concord Carlisle, it's best if that, if that assessment is strongly positive, because it is a lot of work and it does involve the member municipalities.
So, exactly.
So, to be kind of ambivalent about it is not so great, but if, if everybody really thinks this is worth doing, then absolutely go forward. The, Steve made his point earlier in the presentation, an out of date regional agreement or one that's not in compliance is still a legal working regional agreement. So, it's, it's not like it's a crisis, but there are, I mean, as Steve said, you, you have an, you have an agreement that hasn't been looked at.
Yeah, let me, let me challenge that. So, I agree and I like what you said, but, I mean, you, what you guys mentioned, so you've done some preliminary look and what I heard you say is, first of all, the amendments are not all in one document. Right, let's just start with that. So, does the fact of just putting them in one document, does that itself, is that an opening event? I mean, what are trigger events to actually require the starting of this process and what can be done? Is there anything that can be done in the cleanup mode like that? Where you're not changing anything, you're simply moving it from a typewritten document to a digitized document or you put all the amendments into a single document? Does that require a rack and all this stuff?
No, it does not.
Okay, so that's an important point, right?
That's something that you, you want to have some sort of, you know, clean document so it's in there, doesn't require anything, but if you have it, so you know what it is. I mean, I read through them and I had to go through different pieces to find what it is, so it changes, because one of the things, it changed the calendar year to calendar fiscal year to fiscal.
Now, you're making changes. I'm saying just you take the amendments.
No, you're, you're, you have an amendment that does that.
Okay.
You have an amendment that's further, from you take the original, then later when they changed the calendar year, fiscal calendar year to a June, July 130, there's a law passed that the school committee could make the amendment and do that, they didn't go get a vote, but you did that. But it's not part of the original agreement, because when you started, the fiscal year was the calendar year. So, there's no changes, it would just pay, what is, what is in effect that you've approved and the department has on file?
So, you're saying those kind of things would not require the mechanics that you want?
No, no, that's just, you just want to clean it up and put it on. That's one of the things we'd ask you, how do you want to go about doing that?
And you referenced 14B, we looked at 14B and 14E and didn't actually see any specific statutory changes since these amendments that, at least from our view, looked like they were material to say the agreement is out of compliance. I didn't hear from you, but the agreement's out of compliance.
We would, one of the things is in there, you are doing your, how you do your assessment and so forth, it's per pupil and there's a law that requires you to do a statutory method and it's not in there.
So, being out of compliance that way means what if one doesn't?
Well, you need to be, you need to have a document that everybody's going to follow and being correctly done based on laws, where, where country laws and regulations.
No, I don't, but Jay just said that we have a document that is a legal document.
Yes.
It may not be up to date with regard to the latest mechanics.
Right, right.
You just said something different, so I want to...
No, no, you're correct when I said it's not up to date to the current, which is supposed to be doing.
Right, but being not up to date and existing with it means what? What is the, what is the impact of having it not up? So, if we sweep aside the cosmetic things, cleaning up, right, and we focus on the second layer, which is bringing it up to compliance, and if we decide, gee, that's a lot of work, we don't want to do that, what does that mean for the, what does it mean to be, just have a document that's not up to the very latest standards?
Well, I'll give my answer and maybe Steve can add to it. So, you can go ahead and still manage and lead the district with the existing document as long as there are no substantive changes. In other words, just leaving as it is.
Yes.
Okay. It, it, I mean, this, one of the slides here was about why update the agreement. So, you know, there are recommendations from the state auditor that these things should be looked at and kept up to date. You probably aren't going to get some kind of a legal challenge, but it is probably better practice to have an agreement that is current.
Right, so it's a lot.
Can I follow up on that question a little bit? Because I think you've looked at ours somewhat.
A little bit.
Can, can you, I guess, highlight a little more, what are the points where we are out of compliance, so we can understand?
It did not go, that's just not part of what we were asked to do.
Okay.
So, I just looked at it saying, it just is not clean doc, we call it clean document, everything before, we'd have to go through it. And the one thing I did notice that was the issue of the assessment, how that's done and it's different under the 07, the change that people sort of use a statutory method.
Okay.
So, I mean, that's the type of thing.
That's true.
And you want to have a document that your superintendent, business manager, your district, everybody's following, here's how you're supposed to do things.
Right.
Here's the correct way to go. And the definitions and then saying on per pupils, what do you mean by per pupils and all those definitions that you want to follow.
One of the other things that's come up in other districts is, we've sometimes said, you know, a regional agreement is really a reference document, you're not opening it up every day.
Right.
And so, when there are changes on the school committee, when there are changes in the central office, if someone doesn't have to explain, well, I know the agreement says this, but what we really do is this, you know, so that there is some, some uniformity.
One of the things, we, we run a professional development program in the fall for new superintendents, I think Jared attended it, and one of the things we tell them is you better first thing is the new superintendent, business manager, school committee, get all your regional agreement, how that works, and then you want to get all the law book, you have the laws, regulations, school committee policy and so forth, all of those things that you want to have and how you're supposed to operate.
Jared, do you have a question?
Yeah, just that, so one of the, one of the things we did talk about with Mars was the assessments, as Steve said. So, that is something that they, they did look into, they did notice that we are doing the per pupil method, as well as they looked at the school committee membership and the makeup of it, makeup of it and the weight of it. Did you have any information on that?
Well, right now, if I got it correct, you, it's five from Concord and two from Carlisle. You elect, you elect them each town by resident, you're not running across lines, am I correct?
Correct.
Okay. So, in that case, is to do that, and each of you have one full vote, what you have to do is you have to take a look at populations of the two communities, put it together, add it up, and what's the percent of population from each community total? And then you take that percent times how many, you have seven board members and it'll tell you how many, what they should be. And you're, you're a little bit off, I can tell you that much, but I do want to do more work with it.
You're going to have fractional people.
That's right.
Well, there's ways to do it, but right now, it does look like you're, each committee member is representing a different number of residents beyond a 10% mark.
You looked at the US Senate, like?
Yeah, I was looking at all numbers perhaps, but yeah.
Can I, can I ask a couple of questions? A little more procedural. If we started this process and had brought together the recommended group of people that you showed us and did some work, came to an understanding of, you know, where there were some issues with compliance, where there were some things that, you know, might be nice to have, came to a conclusion that we don't really want to go to the next step with this, we can stop. Once opened and you anticipate making an amendment, a substantive amendment, are there things that DESI will require also get changed to be a sort of like you've, your house is fine until you want to renovate the attic and now you've got to find a way to put a five-foot wide staircase in there instead of a drop down? Is, once we open it for anything other than cleanup language, are there things that we would have to do?
Well, let me just say, let me just explain this, Steve. You don't open a regional agreement, you only amend it. It's not like a collective bargaining agreement where there is an ending time and then you open it up to, everything is open for negotiation. In an agreement, we can go through, which we've done, you take your agreement, you go through the process to update it and be in compliance as you want to be, and if fails, well, you're still got the, Jay just said, that original agreement is still in place, it hasn't changed, doesn't change until you amend it and it gets approved by the department. So, the thing, you're not opening it, you are amending through the process and if you can't get towns to agree, and we worked with two towns that couldn't agree, so it was never amended, so they still have the old amendment, the old agreement and still have some disagreements with each other, so.
I think your analogy is a good one, okay, for what it's worth. I think, you know, if you decide, if you, let's say you did a, an assessment with a representative group of people and decided not to go forward, fine. If you did that and decided to go forward, then yeah, it is sort of like code, building code, you, you need to get everything in order for the department to approve it. Now, I'm going to put an asterisk next to that. There are some times when if there is one single issue, the department will allow that one thing to be implemented.
You mentioned fractional representation. If that were something that committee, that the group was not interested in putting forward and wanted to keep things the way they are.
Right.
Relative to representation, we could do that?
I believe that there is a way. You may have to change how you, you could keep the numbers and the full votes, but you may have to change how you do the elections.
See, we have, an example would be, there's five ways of you can be in compliant with one person, one vote, which is constitutional law. That's why every 10 years, you notice we have, congressional districts are reordered and everything so that we don't. One of them is you can run across lines and then you can have whatever number you want across the lines and that requires, we get biannual election, but special legislation, you can have it at your spring election, so that's not a problem. But there are five different ways which we would go over with a committee and say, here are the five ways you can be in compliant, which way you want to go. We're working with a district now and they accepted, they're a six-town region and they chose to, elected their own and they chose to have fractional votes. That's what they want, they want to elect their own people and they know because you have a town that might have 2,000 and a town that might have 700. So, there's a different weight that they've got, but they've been happy with that and that's what's going forward with them.
But, but I have to say, and you're referring to 14E, right? Statutes in 14E?
Yeah, I believe I have, but I haven't looked me up.
I'm not seeing we're out of compliance, almost I'm missing something.
What is, what, you have 14E there?
Yeah, I do, as a matter of fact. There are five methods, as you said.
Right.
One of which is appointing committee members by locally elected officials.
Right.
Such as school board members. Each regional school district shall designate individually. So, I mean, how is that out of compliance?
If you're proportional.
It doesn't say anything about proportional.
Then you're good, I don't have the law.
Well, I don't think we're here to be, at the aspect of the law.
Well, no, my point, I guess, Lori, is that we should have context.
Of course.
This is being presented as a fairly comprehensive approach, which will be time-consuming and costly in a variety of ways. So, before we, so we took the information, but it seems like the information precedes the context, which is what's wrong with the current, what don't you like about the current agreement and does it merit fixing at that level? We heard that we can, we heard that we can clean up the agreement in a cosmetic way without opening up this. And so, I'm challenging the ones that will require a more substantive look, you know, I think we should be evidence-based on that.
I think that's, I think that's a good point. I think it's also a part of a separate discussion after tonight, to me. And this can help inform us as to what we need to understand better to make decisions about moving forward or not.
I can read off, as you've asked, the five, electing committee members by voters in member towns, each community represent a portion according to the total population. Electing members, district-wide elections be held at the biannual state elections, which you can have, because everybody's voting, so you can have, don't have to follow the amount of members in your town. Electing members, residency requirement, district-wide elections be held at the biannual. Weighted votes of committee members according to the total population and appointing school committee members by locally elected officials. An example, vocational schools, a lot of them have their members voted by the board of selectmen in that member town. But in your particular case, those are the five ways and it says, each group designate, each, if a regional district decides to elect members in a district-wide election at the biannual election, if any vexes be filled, the district clerk shall notify the Secretary of State on the April 15th of the biannual elections they have, they have to do the biannual election, they usually it'll be two-year, four-year terms. So, again, this is, this is part of what, in the process, that we provide you with that information. That's all we were trying to give you, is a process to go through that, look at those things that might be, might want to look at, make sure you're in compliance and make sure that, you know, that they need up to date. I mean, you've got 47 years without any looking at that agreement, so that's what they're for, chapter four.
I would prefer that you said, you have 47 years of successful cooperation.
Yes, it is.
And it was fine.
I didn't say that, I said he does, he's been good and going good, I mean, look at what you've been doing here, so. I just said, we were asked to come in and present that to you and give you a process. If you want to look at it, that's fine, if you don't, that's up to you. But again, is, and one of the things we do with the regional agreements now, that we work with every five years, they look at and every 10 years, they do a major, see if there's any changes they need to make, as well as populate everything changes in communities that they want something different in your agreement.
Can I just address the context question to you, Dave, because it's a good question and some of it, I think, comes from conversations that we've had over the past year or even two years. And there have been, there have been things that triggered this conversation and the interest to at least look at what would this process look like and how would it work? What does it mean? An example of one being the financial bump that each of us, each of our towns has had to take over the past two years subsequently. We took, two years ago, we took a, or a year ago, we took a hit when the enrollments shifted and we had a significant increase in our assessment, right? Then this year, as we just passed next year's budget, it shifted back the other way and you guys had to stomach a hit. Those, those kind of things could conceivably be adjusted if we adjusted the way we counted our students and went, you know, if we did a rolling average instead of an October 1 number, things like that. So, that's not, and that's not to sit here and debate that point, do we want to change or not? But it's things like that that have brought up this conversation many times over the past year and a half for many of us to say, hmm, let's, let's at least find out about this process. It could make sense to look into this because there are things that being out of date make it harder for both of us. And so, it seemed like a question that was worth looking at because it could help both towns if we smoothed out some of those bumps. That, does that help in terms of, and there are other things too.
Not particularly. I think you had two years to, I appreciate that, but you had two years to identify a punch list of items and I guess, me personally, I would have preferred to lead with that. But it's okay, I appreciate what these gentlemen came to present and I think we had a good picture. And what I'm getting out of it is there are certain things we can do easily without touching, quote unquote, the agreement process. And so, there, over here, there are some things that are statutorily maybe out of date, but that in and of itself is not a showstopper. And then there are things we may want to look at changing and we need to, I think, in my opinion, we need to sort of rank order those, understanding the process it would take to change those and have that debate.
Right.
And then it's plenty of time to bring these guys back to say.
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
So, that would be my point, that's all.
I think one other thing you might also enlighten us on is, has the Commissioner come back during the preliminary conversations? You say it's a two-step with the Commissioner. Have you seen a pattern where the Commissioner comes back and has particular emphasis that relates to the questions that have been asked of you before about when one, one event is a trigger for more attention than was originally anticipated? Any, any cases there you point out?
Yeah, first of all, the Commissioner himself doesn't do it, it's the staff that does it.
Fair enough, fair enough.
I don't want to go out and say the Commissioner doesn't.
Got it.
What do we need anymore?
Yes, yeah. The answer is if we work with them and we've seen, we've put, worked with the agreement, we send it in, they will come back for certain things saying, no, this is not, you can't, we don't agree with that, or you might need to clarify this. We have a district that is, does weighted votes and we said two-thirds of the committee voting, we had to put in two-thirds of the weighted votes. So, different little pieces that they say to make sure it's very clear, so there's nothing there. The other one, there's another thing that they, somebody wanted to put, the lawyer wanted to put in, and they said, no, you can't put that in, they won't accept it. So, they come back and take a look at what we proposed and then if they don't feel it's correct, well, legal looks at it, well, as the staff.
So, it's of a pretty technical nature?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
And they're very, and the reason we say they do, and I agree with them, because right now, all of you, here we, Jay, do an agreement, everybody understands it, 30 years from now, none of us are going to be in this room, the next people are coming in, it should be able to very clear exactly what they're supposed to do. Because a lot of times they'll ask us, okay, I want you, here's the, here's the section, I want you to explain that to them. So, by explaining to them, they said, look at what you just wrote, is that explanation of which you wrote the same thing? So, we have, that's what they're looking at to make sure that people in the future know exactly what to do with it and how you calculate things.
Got it, thank you.
Makes sense, yeah.
Any other questions?
Any other questions?
Yes, how long does this process usually take or what you guys project, where is your team projecting for this process to take?
It depends how, we've had two different, one is, I just got finished, we did one in seven months, but the two towns wanted to do it and we moved right along. Another one is about a year and another one's a year and a half. So it depends what comes up and what those issues are. And I'll take, I don't, if you're moving along to everybody agrees, you don't try to push it, to people things down their throat, you wait, you make sure everybody's in agreement that you want to do. So it could be anywhere from a year to a year, it's dependent.
Yeah, I would agree. I think a year is a pretty good ballpark answer. And I also would agree with the notion that you want to take your time, particularly around the important issues, to make you sure you get everything just the way it needs to be so that people can support it. But yeah, I did a regional agreement with Steve, with a regional vote tech on the South Shore, it went, it went pretty, pretty well. It was less than a year, but I think a year is a good, is a good thing to think about and maybe a little more.
One of the things we say, set the end date, when do you want to take this to town meeting? Do you want to take it to a spring annual? Some people say, no, just tell me things we want to do, a fall special. So you set that date and then we work everything back and we get, what do we need to get done by certain points?
You know, I guess my last comment is that no one brought this up because we don't think it's working. It is working and has worked for a very long time. The only goal here would be to make it work better. Jared and I both are here because we have regional school experience and we've lived changes to regional agreements that bettered the communities that we were working in. So I think that's much of the intent here is to see what options are here, if any, that would better serve both communities. It begs the question that if it's been 40-some years since you've looked at it, is there something in that that might tweak it, that might make it a little bit better in a certain, certain place? But if the answer is, in the big picture, it's so marginal that it's not worth this length of the process, then that's for the committee to decide. I think we felt our job was to follow through on really what did start almost 18 months ago as a conversation of a "I wonder" from some of you and just trying to keep that moving.
And I would say appreciate it because we asked you to do this. I mean, and that request has come long-term, obviously we've had some turnover here, but we, we have asked you to find out what this process would look like. So thank you for doing the initial research and thank you guys for coming. It's been really helpful to understand this process better so we can think about it and discuss as a committee.
We've also been doing a number of things over the last two years that are changing the way we've done things and not change for change's sake, change because we thought it's a better way to do it, like zero-based budgeting, what we did with the West Ed presentation and the changes we're making with Special Ed. And, you know, sort of in the same vein is that, you know, this is our governing document. So I think it warrants our consideration as to whether or not, you know, this is something we benefit from undertaking, the community's benefit from undertaking.
So what are people thinking our next steps are?
I think we should put a, an item on, I don't know if a June 11 meeting, just to sort of have a couple of links to process what we've heard.
Yeah, absolutely.
And then talk about what we want to do next. So let's use that as an action at the next meeting and, you know, again, just trying to take assessment of where we are. I don't anticipate this is going to be an overnight process. I would not see this being at the 2020-10 meeting, so.
Yeah, and you spoke to it well, do it right and expect it to have a long life.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Jared, can you go pull that?
Yeah.
New business.
Hi, Melissa.
That was a report. Technically.
Where'd you go?
Just grabbing the...
Cueing it up. Bunch of variants. Let's go here. It's not under manual. It's not under the AED.
What is that?
I get one link.
Are you on the webpage version, region?
I'm on MASC. Link from our policies.
No thanks, she was looking to get on that. I'll have to get it there. I can't get on, I can't connect to anything.
Let me see, maybe you can look on my... Can't connect to the net?
I just can't, yeah.
Can we proceed?
We can keep going, yeah, yeah. No, I haven't been able to the whole, yeah, I'll look on the, on you guys.
So Jared.
Thank you.
So this is the monthly variance report ending May 23rd. So for the new members, the way that this is, is a number of ways that I present the information. This report is by DESI's 1,000 function and I give a little summary down below of what is in each DESI's function, 1,000 all the way to the 9,000. So to date right now, we're in good shape. We have about $967,000 unencumbered right now. That doesn't mean we're going to end with that. What that does mean is there's, there's still some unknowns that I don't know about that are going to come through, you know, such as some IT items that are going to hit the books, some maintenance, some tuitions. And then we're going to be able to put some of that money back into Circuit Breaker that at the regional side, we do not carry any over. So we're going to be able to build a little bit of a contingency. We should also be able to pay a little bit of special intuitions to collaboratives at the end of this fiscal year. So I'm confident that we're, we're in very good shape. I still have to see the year out just to see what I don't know. And I should have a better picture really after our final payroll because that's when we have our largest payroll of the year and I can, and all of our stipends and everything are paid out that may not be encumbered.
Can I ask you, because I'm new to this presentation format? So the adjustments, first of all, the adjustments column, these are the things you're making to move pieces around?
Correct.
Which, what is the authority under which you do that?
So right now, what we do is I present the, by 1,000 function to the committee, not by line and not even by 100 function. So I would just give a brief description as to what, what the adjustment's going from, you know, 2,000 to a 1,000.
Is this a vote that we take or are you just informing us of what you do?
It's really informative.
So you have the authority to move it around inside the budget?
When Jared first started, I'm going to roll back time a little bit. These are new reports to this committee as of this, this little year. So when Jared first started, we had an early discussion of what level of reporting and what level of transfers you were going to have us make versus you approve. And really, we decided on a reporting mechanism with an implied consent in hearing the report. We can continue to look at that now that we're all getting more familiar with it, as all of you get more familiar with it as a new committee. That's where we left it because prior to that, things have been so different that there was less of an approval process. I've worked on committees that have done it all sorts of different ways. You don't want to be doing line item approvals, you'll do nothing else. Even 100 category approvals can get bogged down.
We have a line item approval. Have you sent us those vouchers anymore?
You do, through the warrants, see the line items. That's, that's true, David. So, you know, the question is what formality and process do you want? And I think a year in now, some of you could probably speak to that more, some of you will just have to bear with it and then we can talk more on it. So up until now, we have been making the transfers. Now we're reporting, up to you.
But are these, so are these, is this like a year-end, one-time thing or is this going each time periodically you do this?
It goes on yearly throughout the year.
Throughout, so making this...
Oh, so quarterly I give it by 100 and then monthly, you know, I give it by...
But you make the adjustment, you move the pieces around monthly basically?
Pretty much.
So this is a snapshot of like the penultimate?
Yeah, this has been all year's snapshot.
And the balance, the unencumbered, which, you know, I'm grateful now to be at the regional level where I don't have a guy across town who wants to take that money. So it's your money, I mean, it's the region's money. Nobody can say we're clawing it back for something else, right? So it's your, it's the choice of the district then to, as you mentioned, prepay, right? Some obligations to put it in E and D or some of them to that?
E and D, yeah. Circuit breaker.
Circuit breaker, which, it's really not circuit breaker, right? Circuit breaker is something comes from the state, isn't it?
It's a circuit breaker.
It's your own middle circuit.
It's a revolting. So my recommendation would be right now to put it into potentially Circuit Breaker and let the E and D, I think with our revenues that we received this year higher than what was voted on, are going to increase our E and D levels as well as reducing our E and D contribution for FY '20's budget. That affects our FY '19 E and D.
So you don't have to designate what purpose the E and D goes to.
Correct.
General化. So really, that's a more flexible thing than putting it in Circuit Breaker, right?
No, Circuit Breaker... Well, that's right, but you, anytime you use E and D, technically you have to come back to the committee, you have to get a vote of the committee to increase your budget and then you actually have to go back to the two towns and say, we're increasing our budget. They have 45 days to comply.
So we all do that.
Well, they can say immediately, right away, we're not going to, you have the money, we're not going to give you extra money. If you have it yourself, go ahead and raise the budget. Circuit breaker is, you're a little more flexible with that because you can prepay tuitions and then potentially move that money elsewhere.
So you create your own E and D elsewhere.
Continue, yeah.
Essentially. You're marking the unencumbered to sped expenses.
Correct.
And it frees up, if you needed more pencils, you just pull it from somewhere else.
And one of the things, just for new members, that we, that we had a voters review and coming back from that was that our, our E and D was approaching troubling levels for them relative to, you know, and it's, it's an annual trade-off and has been for the last few years between funding OPEB on the ARC or E and D. Then we've actually used some E and D to be on the ARC. And what we learned from that process this year was that we, we put our AAA rating in some jeopardy if we let E and D fall as an expense of competing on the ARC. Moody's doesn't look at the ARC as...
The ARC is open arc?
As open arc, as critically as they do E and D. So we went through that in this last budget cycle.
So they want the E and D, but they don't want you to touch the E and D?
They want, so they want E and D at a, you know, recommended level of say even 3%, but they also want, they also want additional contingencies.
Is there a reserve fund or?
Like Circuit Breaker or...
Well, we, the towns have free cash, but they're, it's all E and D.
It's all E and D, but then you have your revolting, you have your athletic, you have...
You have those anyway.
Yeah, but we have, athletic is healthy, but we have nothing in Circuit Breaker and that's what they're looking at.
Athletic's not a reserve.
Yeah, so it's, it's really, it's, it's really Circuit Breaker is the, is the one that they're looking at. We carried zero last year.
And then statutorily, we can't carry an E and D above 5%.
Correct. Lot rated and then three to five. Rating agencies, right?
No, your rate is close, shaving your knuckles.
Well, you need that bond rating, that's like the most critical.
Yep, that's correct.
Just a few contextual pieces to these numbers. So this is coming off of the FY '19 budget, which is built in the prior way of building budgets, rolled it forward and add-on without the zero-based approach. So we've had, you can remember, some of you at the beginning of the year, we had a lot of transfers going on as we moved line items around and things like that. So the work we did in the FY '20 budget exists within the line items of the FY '19 budget and it's also resulting in the movements that you see there. So you can see the adjustments are hopefully never, they're going to, they're going to be there, they will, and we'll be able to track them and tell you why. But this was a lot of just clean up and put things in the right lines. The other piece I have to stress is that everything we did and continue to do to save and be more effective and efficient has been ongoing within FY '19. So, you know, just in looking at data, as we've gathered that this year and the number of out-of-district placements, we're down significantly from where we've been in years and yet we had budgeted contingency monies for new placements that haven't actualized. So there's just lots and lots of moving pieces. With the zero-based approach, I don't think either of us expect you're going to see balances like this in late May in a coming fiscal year because to zero base means you know where the dollars were going and barring continued really effective savings, which I'm not going to say isn't going to happen, but to this kind of number, I think would be unlikely. It's a good place to be for this year because our stabilities are not what they should have been going into this year at the region. Even at CPS, we needed to stabilize some of the pieces of Circuit Breaker and some other aspects. So I think this is a really great place to be right now and I think it's fruition of a change in mindset, it's a, a change in budgeting practice, it's a change in basic efficiencies and creating new opportunities to do things better and differently. And all of that's coming together to leave us in good standing at the end of this year. So kind of to David's point, this isn't extra money that we, you know, you remember how I got this budget? I laid people off to get this budget. This is an extra money. This is money that's going to stabilize us and is a result of all the great work that's been going on.
And this gives us a much better view of the month-to-month and quarter-to-quarter flows of cash than we had in my experience on the committee for sure. And we also have talked about these adjustments in some detail in the Budget Subcommittee, which is really, the Budget Subcommittee is focused on current year activities primarily. And so that's, you know, that's been helpful in this part.
And we also got some lucky breaks. It was a really easy winter, you know, that can have a few hundred thousand dollar slay and you happen to know you've got funds to absorb that. We didn't need those kind of buffers this winter, so all sorts of different factors come together in these numbers.
So, we're good? Any other questions for Jared?
Nope.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Meetings good. So we've made adjustments to this to reflect what we discussed at our last meeting about identifying specific meetings for joint and solely conquered. And then the meetings that, in our experience, have been necessary to have multiple joint meetings back-to-back. There was one date that I know we wanted to talk about adjusting, for instance, I have a senior who's in that awards ceremony tonight and I'm here instead.
And I can't attend, you know.
Sorry, can't be there.
And that's going to keep happening if we don't...
I think we'd like to make sure that that doesn't happen going forward. And so that would require us to change the May 26th to something else.
So you want to stay away from that week essentially?
Certainly, yeah. I think that week period because it's, you know, it's, it's a busy week with graduation looming.
So is it better to move to after graduation?
Well, I guess the alternative would be to move to June, the next June date, right? Which would be what the, in this case, the...
Do we have a calendar?
Yeah, I'm pulling up a calendar.
That would be, that'd be to June of 2020.
So June 2nd.
Tuesday, June 2nd.
Right, then we'd have June 2nd and June 9th, which is a lot of June, or you could go earlier to the 19th.
Is it May?
It's in May next year.
It is, okay.
It is, it's the last Saturday in May.
Wow.
So it would be the same week.
Just the way the calendar...
So what you're saying is the week, the last week of May?
Yeah, we're thinking, yeah, we would scratch that meeting and do something either June 2nd. We could make, we could make the 12th a joint meeting and drop 26 and if we need 16, we have it, if we don't, we don't. And then we have that June 9th. So, okay, those are some of the options. Anybody got another idea? You said stand on our...
Put June 2 in if we get swamped.
So, seem to work, Lori, from your perspective?
Which are you advocating?
So it was what, sorry, what plan was that?
So let's, let's make May 12th a joint meeting. Now, one of the things we do have to remember, we're going to be doing is this superintendent eval, which is a joint committee piece. So if we do this, rather than go to the June 2 date for a joint meeting, it almost guarantees we will need a June 16.
Yeah, I would almost say instead, let's put more in our, I feel like May is, May and June is always really busy. So to cut us to one in May feels like we're going to end up paying for it in June. What if we just go 12 and 19 in May? The 12th and then again the 19th? And then, and then we have the 9th.
And we would, we would do the evaluations to be, we'd have to do the evaluation earlier.
Probably June 9th, oh.
You can't do it later?
Well, you could, you do, we just have to, you know, for instance, we're, we're not going to have that, what, with the June 16 joint meetings here, right?
We were hoping.
We're hoping not to, right? The one that this year is scheduled for the 18th, right?
Right.
So if we are hoping for that next year.
Yeah, that'd be hard.
Why don't you put it in the way, that way, it's your way, how you suggested.
I would put one in the 19th and be safer by having more in May. And then if we can scratch the 16th, we do.
Be great.
Okay.
Don't worry about that later.
Sounds great. So I definitely appreciate the effort to segregate the meetings. So thank you. Tell me what's going on in November and December that requires funding.
Budgets.
Budgets. So budgets are.
We have to have a budget in the warrant, approved and in the warrant for
First week in January.
First week in January.
Approved and in the warrant means it has to go through all the socialization at the finance committees and stuff. But where is the burden on the school committee? I mean, I see that as outreach and, you know, subcommittee meetings with other organizations. I don't see that as.
Sometimes we have to vote adjustments to what we preliminary.
Isn't that where you have a subcommittee for that?
No, we don't do that.
It'll be in conversation with the finance committee.
Yeah, the whole committee votes the budget.
The whole committee votes the budget. Yeah, of course, at the end, but even the iterations of it. So who prepares? How is it prepared?
Typically, it's prepared with the chairs on the, on the administration.
Chairs.
And the Budget Subcommittee now stays very close to the process and here is all the data along the way.
Right.
So there is a Budget Subcommittee.
There is a Budget Subcommittee.
Can a lot of that be done in subcommittee and then?
The, the subcommittee is a public meeting.
That's okay, so is this one. I mean, if you're having a public meeting, but I'm just saying.
So yeah, I think, we're talking about drafting the budget and, and making these adjustments. And we, as a committee, have always felt that it's the response, it's all of our responsibilities to be engaged in the conversation about what the overall budget is we're going to present to the community. The Budget Subcommittee, which really was just formed last year, as it, we, we went through in that first year sort of procedures that we incorporate into the process and, and brought back to the committee, made some adjustments, some of what we just talked about was part of that work. And in the process came to the conclusion that that Budget Subcommittee is probably better suited to aspects of the current fiscal year process and the budget development.
But what would be needed there? I mean, he's taking care of lines 100 to the 1,000, informing us of changes. I don't know, I don't see how a subcommittee would pay much attention to the current one unless something is coming off the rails. I mean, that to me is an oversight function, whereas planning the budget is a much more interactive, you know, thing. I don't, it doesn't make sense to me that a Budget Subcommittee would be looking at a budget that had already been approved and it seems very well managed by the business manager and the administrative team. I mean, what value does that give?
I think it's been both. I think at a high level, we've wanted a few of the committee members, which became the Budget Subcommittee, to have a better detailed understanding of the budgets. Both the current one, what's happening with it, how that affects planning going forward, how the budget is created, all of that. So the Budget Subcommittee really was getting a, a deeper understanding of both the existing budget and the creation. Then in terms of the creation, to step back for a second, these meetings in November and December are not for the creation of the budget. That tends to happen in Octobers, September into October. So the creation is earlier. Then it's brought to us as the school committee.
By the administration.
So by administration, right. So Laurie and Jared, bring it to us. We probably have some questions, comments, maybe there are some things we have to discuss. It, it gets presented to the FinCom, and at the same time in here, they're creating their guidelines, and there's usually some back and forth.
When does your guideline come out?
Preliminary is in October. Final is Thanksgiving.
All right. So you have the preliminary when you first basically present it here, the first joint meeting. And then you said one of them. So what happens in, if, if preliminary is in October and final's not until Thanksgiving, we got two meetings in November, what's changing in November?
A lot can be changing in November depending on where the guidelines are.
It kind of depends where the guidelines going and what the points of the budget are that are up for debate. So you could go, I mean, if we took, for example, last year's, you know, we were having a lot of in-depth discussions around the E and D, the, the OPEB ARC, the various, you know, at the region, those things, how they were going to balance out, what the priorities were going to be, how we would potentially hit or get closer to the guideline. And those things would continue to shift, and they're things that the whole committee needed to, or we thought wanted to have input on. And so they needed to be in touch with, and capital articles that come up and determining what's in the capital article and what's being presented. And we needed the whole committee to be able to come and have a say and approve what we then needed to submit to the town for the town meeting deadline.
And it's not just capital articles. It's any, it's any article that would be going into, into our joint warrants.
So the whole warrant, the whole warrant, all the articles are?
January.
January.
Usually like January 34th.
Right. Which basically means we have to have it done in December.
I guess, okay. I, I, my recommendation would be to put the November 5th meeting as a CSC meeting with the option to make it a regional if there's issues. I have a hard time seeing, I understand the December because you, you're close run up to the final. I'm not quite getting why there's two in November.
Well, the November 5th is going to be right after we've received the initial
You won't have it sent by the 22nd?
For budget, no, you won't have that by the 22nd.
And I think our experience has been such that I would much prefer that we approach this. If we don't need it, we'll change it, rather than if we do need it, we incorporate.
Okay. I accept. Deal to the chair.
David, I'm sympathetic to your point, but last year was my first year following a process like this, and there was no shortage of new information coming in. It was all, it was all legitimate that we did, we did want to get our, our heads around.
I accept.
So in order to vote this, which we should do, we need to amend the document in front of us to expand to the 26th, add the 19th, and leave the last two the same. So we're just moving the 26th to the 19th.
And we're looking at summer, July?
We are looking at, pardon me?
Still determining summer dates.
Oh, right, July, yeah.
Did everybody respond to the doodle poll?
Yeah.
Everybody responded, and the person that put it out hasn't.
You didn't see it? Did it go to everybody or?
To everybody.
She's been out of touch.
Yeah, I don't know why I thought we were completely.
She unplugged for the weekend.
Unplugged.
Okay.
That's why she's so calm.
So we should have imposed that. Why don't we?
How did your kids survive? How did three teenagers survive with devices?
It was perfect. They were up, they kept me up till 2 o'clock in the morning.
Long conversations.
Are you able to pull that up?
I believe in July, you just need one, Carlisle, right?
Yes, correct.
Yep.
So July, the 23rd and the 30th are the, appear to be best dates.
What works for Laurie and Jared?
I can do either of those two. I can't do the first two. You're bad.
Uh, yeah.
Whatever works.
So, shall we say the 23rd?
Is this in lieu of August or?
This would be, this is, we'll put it on the calendar and only do it if we have to. And we will, and so let's put down July 23rd. We have to have three members from Concord and we have to have one member from Carlisle.
Or at least one.
At least one. I mean, ideally, we're all there, but we can't touch, I don't think I've ever seen a July meeting.
Heather, does that work for you?
So the 23rd, and then August, we'd probably, let me see, we have two Concord members. Can't do the 6th because we wouldn't have a quorum. We could do the 13th, we'd have two Concord members out, and only if Ava can make it.
What date?
August 13th.
Did I say no to that?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, I can make.
August 13th, are you available?
August 13th. It's still, I'm still waiting because.
Looking at this, I would recommend we do the 20th. We, David's available. Heather, you're not.
I'm not.
Yuval is not, but we can get a quorum. I think we, in the interest of having, nobody is, we don't have a date on a Tuesday where everybody's available. So I don't think we're doing a workshop in August. We don't think we'll workshop in September sometime. And maybe at that August meeting, we'll set that, we could put it to Repola ahead of time. What we've learned is that the best way to do that workshop is to have it specifically the workshop rather than attached to a meeting.
What other things you'd like to do on that?
We set the goals for the committee. We talk about, it might be when we have somebody come from MASC, since we have four new members to the region and two to the CPS, we have the MASC come and talk about policies and procedures. And anything, as, as part of summer work, if there's something that somebody's interested in bringing to the committee, has a potential activity for next year and wants to, that puts a meeting on the bone before we talk about it, then, you know, that can be done. And, you know, if somebody wants to help with that, they can, we just have to be careful about, about meeting law.
So you, you're saying, no, there'll be no workshop?
Be no workshop in August, but we will have a meeting on the 20th.
So you need a meeting each month regardless of that?
We should, we should have one, and especially as we come into, as school starts to follow the week there. So usually, we, we've almost always had the August meeting, but quite often not had the July meeting.
And there's a chance too, that we pull it or that we make it just Concord if we have a middle school update. With the building committee being created, I think there's a good chance that Concord will need to meet. So I would say Concord folks, keep it on your schedule as definite, I would think at this point. The joint part, I think, will be the, the question.
And we'll call that off as soon as possible.
Okay.
Can I ask one more question about, what was the date in October? We took away the 8th and moved to the 1st? Is that?
Yes.
Okay.
Prior version.
Right.
Okay.
We changed one because of
Religious holidays.
Religious holidays.
Okay, thank you.
Are you allowed to say that here?
Good.
So.
So we took away, yeah, I can't remember which.
So we've got a, I'll enlist, I wish I had a piece of paper.
So now.
Vaguaries of, so what we're going to vote, I'll make a motion.
Sure.
That we vote the calendar and the agenda with an amendment that adds July 23rd as a joint meeting, August 20th as a joint meeting, and moves May 26th to May 19th.
Second.
Of 2020. Good, yeah.
Second.
Second.
I'm sorry.
Any more discussion? All in favor for the region? All in favor for the region?
Aye.
Aye. And all in favor for the, was the motion, the motion was for both?
It was.
Just to clarify. Or was it, that was your motion, I think?
I didn't make it for both. So I will make it for Concord as well.
You make the same motion for Concord?
Same motion for Concord.
Please, do we have a second for Concord? Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay. Our calendars set.
Um, no.
Next liaisons. Okay, so this afternoon, sorry it wasn't earlier, I sent out the draft this afternoon. Did everybody get that?
I was just trying to.
If we have that, at least.
I don't think you sent it.
Is that the?
The draft.
One from this afternoon?
From this afternoon, I sent it there.
No, that is not this afternoon.
I'm having.
Yeah.
No, no, no.
I didn't know.
Oh.
You didn't send it.
Uh-oh.
No, I don't think.
Could be any other.
It's probably, you know, I wonder, I can't connect to night here and everybody else's, so I wonder if I'm having issues. I'm sorry. I thought I sent it this afternoon. Nobody got it? Okay, I'm going to read to you from the draft. Sorry about that. I thought it went out mid-afternoon. Uh, no, wait, I, okay.
Somebody else got it?
No.
Okay. All right, sorry, then I would have brought printouts or something. Okay, so what I did, what I did, maybe in fact it would be helpful, Eric, sorry to put that list up.
Can you plug that into there?
The old list, yeah.
Oh, sure. Can I just plug that in there?
Just plug Heather into.
Want to do that?
It'll, it'll come up. The old ones come up on that link.
Log into.
Yeah, we don't want the old ones.
No, this isn't, I mean, it's just.
Oh, she has it?
It's just the document online. Yeah, that's what they say, I don't know.
We can try. What do you have? What kind of machine?
A Mac.
Oh, you can either airdrop it to one of us.
Oh, I could do that. An airdrop? Who can just read through what I have?
Why don't you do that?
Okay, let me just go through this. Trying to be efficient here.
He goes that way before.
Right, exactly. Okay. I'm sorry it's not as prepared as that. I thought I sent it out to everyone. Okay, so first, thanks to everybody for sending preferences. I went through, Wally did as well. We tried to place people in appropriate places. Most of them are according to what you've requested, and then we have a few in here that we put in as draft changes or ideas that we thought might make sense. I want to see if all of you are up for that. Okay, so adult and community ed. Eva, you had expressed interest in that. So we have Eva there. Edco advisory board, I can take.
Do we have a backup to adult ed?
No, to adult, just seat back later. Not adult ed.
Oh, that's right, I'm sorry.
On some of these, we'll specify a backup where it's likely where it's needed. On others, you know, if you can't make it and you need to ask someone to fill in for you, reach out, you know, we all help each other when we need to. So Edco, I can take, and we'll coordinate with Laurie on when and how that, we go to that. Concord Finance Committee. Cynthia, thank you for offering to be one of the people. We want to ask Yuval to be the second person on that, to rotate. Fortunately, he's not here.
I think he should be the default for every role.
Yeah, exactly. We'll just assign Yuval.
We'll teach him a lesson.
Delete some stuff, Sarah. We'll add Yuval.
Exactly. So hopefully he'll be up for that. Concord Select Board, there was a suggestion that we rotate, among the five of us, obviously. So I have that in here as a rotation and we can all rotate through there. Carlisle, Board of Select and Finance, David, you said when needed, you could go there. So that's, I have David as needed, but sounds like you don't necessarily need to go to all of those. PEG Advisory Board, Corin, I know you had interest, so did Wally. We kind of thought maybe get a new person in there to, to get a better understanding of it. So I put Wally in there.
We've got bigger plans for you, Corin.
Yeah, that's right. Policy, we'll take you there, Corin, and you will be the veteran on the policy committee. We're also going to put Yuval there. He did volunteer for that one. And one seat from Carl, we do want to have someone from Carlisle. Eva, would you be willing to do the policy subcommittee?
I'm doing, I think. How often do they meet?
We'll probably meet four to no more than six times daytimes mornings.
We decide based on the availability of the people on the subcommittee and my schedule.
Small group.
It's small group.
It's just a few.
Three people typically, and three people from committee and Laurie and the representative from MASC.
Can we table that and come circle back?
Sure, we can back to it. So that's just out there as a possibility. Financial Audit Advisory Committee. Corin, we wanted to see if you might be interested in that, so that we can hand it off from Wally and have some longevity. It's only a few times a year.
Four so far.
Okay.
I don't think I volunteered for that.
No, you didn't. I volunteered.
That's, that's, that's a little more formal in process. So I'll talk to Chair of the Select Board about that. It's still what we need to do to make that transition.
As you're taking these down, I don't need full commitment as I say each one. We can come back and you can, we can load balance. League of Women Voters is a monthly meeting with the League of Women Voters is a monthly meeting with the Education Committee, I am willing to keep going with that, if that makes sense. It is a time commitment, but I think it makes sense, and I'll, being involved with the middle school, that will make sense. CPAC, Eva, you volunteer for that. We do need a Concord person to be backup on that, 'cause certainly K8 things come up sometimes. Cynthia, I thought, I wondered if you might be willing, interested to do that?
They're meeting during the days, is that right?
They, I think they rotate, sometimes day, sometimes evening.
Okay, good.
And it's not a lot of meetings, I think they.
No, that's fine.
I think it's quarterly, maybe a little more than that, it's not a big time commitment, I've done that one. Building Committee, Court and I are already doing. Budget Subcommittee, Cynthia volunteered, thank you, and David. Court, wanted to see if you might be interested in that one also. That's a really good one to really get to know the budget process in more detail. Sustainability.
So give me the names again for Budget Subcommittee.
Budget Subcommittee, you, Cynthia, David.
And noting what David said earlier, that's still a work in progress. Because last year we had the new type of budget formation, and the emphasis of the committee did shift and evolve.
It did, and I think by the end, we even said, wow, next year we won't need quite as many meetings.
Yeah, and I agree that ultimately we'd say that's not necessary. The three people who are on that are the frontline for warrants.
Did you?
So, one knows warrant, because we don't, we don't need warrant signatures from everybody.
Once you have that committee form, you only, you only need those people.
Three people there plus a fourth for the region, right?
Right.
Yep, so.
Plus a fourth?
Well, fourth for both.
Plus an extra for?
No, I'm sorry.
Three, three for CPS, four for the region.
Right, but the three here, of the three, one is Carlisle, so you need an extra Concord person to sign the Concord warrants.
Yes.
And an extra person.
I would be happy to continue doing that.
Okay, great, so then, then the warrant signers will be Cynthia, what did I say, Court, David, and Wally.
So that's all, who will get the warrants?
Everybody gets one.
They go out everyone, but the rest of us.
The other.
We have to physically come and sign those names.
Afterwards, yes.
You can first just approve by email, and then.
Yeah, we've implemented a, we've done what we needed to do to make that appropriate.
Typically, we come in here before a meeting or after a meeting, go over and find color-coded sheets, require a signature.
I have them right, ready to go before you go, already filed.
The reason we implemented this was coming in here to a meeting with those, sitting on your desk and trying to go through 10 pages while we're getting ready for meetings. Impossible.
So is that statutory Concord, because everybody has to sign and you have to physically sign and all that?
It's been on process, it's, it's better oversight, they can elect for one person to designate to sign that, but.
Sounds like you got a lot of oversight. Examine that again recently to see if that's really.
We just implemented.
Yeah, we just did, you're, what, this fall?
You Concord guys like your procedures, don't you?
We, we get a lot, we get a lot of oversight.
Last couple, sustainability, Cynthia?
Sure.
You would put your name on that for that, thank you, and safety, Yuval is interested, so we put him there. Those are the set ones, are the ones that are on the definite list. Then there are three here that we wanted to put out there for discussion. Cynthia had recommended that we send someone to the Recreation Commission and the Climate Action Advisory Board. Yuval had asked that we discuss having a Metco liaison somehow. So, wanted to put those out here for discussion. The, the first two, I think, are more general, the, the last one on Metco, there's a little bit of feedback that we've gotten from the Metco Director. And just, just need some more thinking.
Okay.
So on the first two, though, Recreation Commission, Climate Action Advisory Board.
I think you just keep an eye on it, I don't.
Which we're trying to do.
I think the only question is about.
I think it would be valuable, yeah, I think it's valuable that the liaison to sign to those. Just look at the agenda, is there something school-related? Keep track of what's going on there, if, I know that we put me down there for the Climate Action Advisory Board, I would probably go to that anyway.
I think we're all on the same page, Concord can, we pay, we're paying attention.
Paying attention, we don't wanna create too much extra load here, we don't spread ourselves too thin, but, yeah, if you're gonna go to that anyway, great, we are.
And then the Metco piece, there's the various moving pieces there right now, and we thought, let's sort of see where our relatively new director and the new, it's not a commissioner, what's the name of the?
She's a CEO.
CEO of Metco. Let's see where some of that shakes out, I know that there's been some research done, it may very well make sense that we have somebody there, but I don't think we need to decide it right now.
Good.
That's fine, I mean, just clarification, do we have a friends of Metco active at the present time?
We had, well, there's lots of family connections that are under that similar title, so each student has a family that they connect with. Andrew's getting a parent group organized, so the hope was actually, when I spoke with him, his hope is to actually have a Metco parent observing us, which actually is probably more effective than us trying to figure out where you would go to connect with them, so we wanted to wait it out a little longer. We're all on the same track, it's just a matter of what the best vehicle is.
Yuval did ask that I share his comments to me, which were just the, the, the reason behind the suggestion was to show our support for Metco and make sure that we are connected and know what's going on. I do agree with that, I think it's important, very important that we show our support and know, stay engaged. But yes, if someone is potentially gonna come to see us, I think it makes sense to wait and see what that looks like, and wait and see, you know, if it makes sense, if someone's coming, but they wanna have a, you know, a primary point of contact, maybe we establish that at some point, but I think that does make sense to see what it looks like first.
So, I would make a motion for both, Region and CPS, that we accept the slate of liaisons as we've discussed.
As red.
Second.
Discussion, Eva, there, I know there is, you had a question about one of them, you wanted to come back to it, I think.
Yeah, Eva has a lot on her plate, though she's got policy.
I don't overload her, what is the, tell me about what the policy.
Policy, Laurie, you may describe it differently, we, we are going through the policies because they are so numerous that just by the sheer volume of them, they require attention and periodic updating.
Don't you guys engage MASC to do that?
Yeah, because.
Yes, we do.
They're in the room. They come to the room. We have, we have to, we have to accept.
And then once they're worked on. So once they're accepted, then what, then you present them through?
Then they're brought back here twice, a draft and discussion, and then a subsequent vote.
Twice a year or twice each pass?
And then we have a batch.
Yes, right, and batches.
So the batch will come in one meeting for just presentation, and we can all see it, understand what the changes are, but we don't vote it the same night, we vote them.
So the recommendation comes out of subcommittee?
Right.
And it comes out when, that's right, when they're ready to come out, but typically batches.
You know, we're gonna be close to, you know, this is now year five of trying to get through the whole policy manual, so once we finish, which is not that far off, it begs a conversation of like, what's the sustainable way to do this?
What's the long-term?
Really, now that you're five years later, you really technically probably should go back to the beginning, so what's the way we maintain?
But did, in the five years, Laurie, did, did MASC then, was there significant retooling as they went through?
Yes.
So now they brought everything up to sort of MS, MASC standard, right?
And a lot of what changes is driven by Mas law.
Which MASC is very good at putting those bulletins out to us, so we can just update the ones that are impacted by the legal changes, so we just have to decide. It is good practice, we've had a little of this conversation earlier on another topic, good practice to have a regular cycle of reviewing the whole thing.
You should review your.
How often we wanna do that, if we're gonna take five years to get through the whole thing, then we'll just never stop, I guess. But I don't know if that's the best way to do it.
It might be worth the subcommittee doing a little thinking about, how do we do this going forward?
Yeah, let's get it finished and then.
And so, how long, when do they meet and how long do they meet?
We set meetings based on the availability of the subcommittee members and my schedule and MASC, and we met, we did list them at the end of the year, just different moving pieces, but we, we've met regularly four to six times a year, and we have a long meeting, try to do two hours or so where we can get through a good batch of them and really make progress.
Now, do they come, MASC rep, it's not your rep, it's a certain person from like the policy group or whatever?
I think it is actually our rep, they assign them.
But, but it's clear this is what she does, she comes.
It is your regular MASC rep?
Dorothy.
Dorothy, and, and she comes already prepared, like, here's your policy, here's your, that is your policy, here's MASC standard.
My, my office gets all of that organized, and then she advises us through the process.
So how much of that can be done remotely to be ready so the meetings are quicker?
All of that goes out to you ahead of time.
So what's the two hours about?
How many policies can we do in two hours? Because we had, we had, we were midway through the policy manual when I got here, and the goal is to finish.
The goal is to finish, I thought the goal was to journey, actually.
Yeah, no, it's journeying, Dave.
Some things.
So, are there, in the process that you've had for the last four years, or you've only done it for a year, but have you, who's done it the longest year?
Mary Sturridge, Mary.
I have, I have the most experience.
Okay, so, because we were through the same navel gazing, and it's, it's just, we, first of all, did you get the full boat MASC package? So they not only do that, but they format it and they inject it onto your website and everything, right?
Yes.
The mechanics are low, right? So, have you found, first of all, do you do policies in a group of policies that are like?
We're going right through the policies, section by section.
So section by section, so you're dealing with like policies all the time, and they're doing the hard work of cross-connecting them through the prior policies to make sure that they're consistent with other policies and they touch those?
I think we're doing all of that work, they're, they're there really as advisors, we're, we're all collaboratively.
They own thing, right, they don't, isn't that one of the benefits, because they've got it all word-searchable and they.
They do, they do, and they've got cross-references on the bottom, so.
Well, they have cross-references to MGL and stuff, but do they have cross-references to their own, to your own policies, and checking for consistency?
We do that collaboratively, I wouldn't say that with any one place that's coming from.
And making to see if we can outsource as much as possible to minimize the time of the committee.
Can I make a recommendation?
Maybe you'd be a better person to be on this committee, it'd help redefine our works.
I'm happy to do that, but I will be intent on streamlining, because I think it's, you know, there's a lot of brains on there, it gets to be.
It is one of our most important functions as a committee.
And you say that because?
Because it's one of the three primary responsibilities of the school committee?
Yeah.
But I mean, you have a policy.
And I've tried to, I have other ways to come at it and bring really strong drafts, so the subcommittee's going through, the management challenge of that is, if I'm doing that, it's hard for me to keep up, so.
Well, you should, no, I mean, I, I agree, it's a school committee.
Can I, it's 10 o'clock, I'd like to.
I'll do it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
May not have the desired outcome, but I would say.
Okay.
They can vote to kick you out.
Then, uh. Do you wanna?
We have to have a Carlisle person.
Yes, we need a Carlisle person.
Replace it.
Are there, before, there's an amendment made to that motion, any other thoughts or changes or anything? Okay?
I made the motion.
Do you wanna amend?
Did I make the motion?
You did. You made the motion for both committees, and I seconded it.
Okay, we're good, right?
Do you, but we have to amend it to change the policy committee Carlisle representative from Eva to David.
As amended.
Okay, there we go, seconded as amended.
Okay. All in favor for the region?
Aye.
Aye.
And all in favor for Concord?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, good, thank you.
Two more things.
Three, right?
So we wanna vote the contract for Director of Student Services. Can I have a motion that the Concord School Committee and the, or I make a motion, the Concord School Committee and the Concord Carlisle Regional School Committee vote to approve the contract for the Ruth Grooby Director of Student Services?
Apologizing to.
For Ruth Grooby, Director of Student Services. And we have a second?
Was that motion for both committees?
Both committees, yeah.
Seconded for both?
Seconded for both.
All right.
Any discussion?
No.
Excited for her pending arrival? All in favor for the region?
Aye.
Any, sorry, and all in favor for Concord?
Aye.
Any opposed?
And last, but not least. I have a motion, I'll read the whole thing. The Concord Carlisle High School Teachers' Association and School Committee Negotiating Team have agreed to a three-year successor agreement, including a two-and-a-half percent increase to the salary schedule in each of the three years. The contract also includes two additional paid holidays. Motion, that the Concord Carlisle Regional School Committee vote to approve the Concord Carlisle High School Teachers' Association contract for the period of 2019 to 2022.
So moved. Seconded.
Any discussion? Thank you for the, for the time, but into this.
Yes.
And thank you to the tutors.
Yes.
All in favor for the region?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? I said it.
And I would move that the Regional School Committee adjourn, but not Concord yet.
Director?
All in favor?
Aye.
Close? Pricket? Thank you.
All right.
Appreciate you sitting through a bunch of K-12 stuff that's aimed a lot like for the CPS.
A couple of signatures for you.
Okay.
Both of us?
Good.
DM is her. DM is you, and then the blank one, which you sent out, so this is you.
Yes, I love that.
Don't turn us off.
We're not done yet, I'm gonna give a minute and tell everybody, collect their things and ourselves.
I think we can start.
Yeah.
I can just keep going, okay.
You guys whisper, we're gonna keep going.
We're gonna keep going, Concord School Committee's still in session, we're gonna go through this really quickly. CMS Building Project Update, the Concord Select Board nominated six of the seven at-large members who will be on the Building Committee. So almost all of the seats are officially filled, since I'm not connecting everything, I don't have my, in front of me what I was gonna read, but the members that they nominated were Don Guarriello, Matt Root, Pat Nelson, Frank Cannon, Tim Holt. What did I just miss? Oh.
No.
And, hold on a second, sorry, I'm doing it by memory since I don't have access to what I was looking at. Wait, let me see if I can see it, sorry. I said that, right? Hold on a second, I'm gonna find it. Oh, and Chris Poville.
Yes.
I forget Chris, so we have a few representatives from the Building Committee, and some others from, oh, and. I thought. From, and also from, sorry, from the Facilities Planning Committee, also from the High School Committee. But maybe not, anyway, okay, those are the names that I have. So that's moving along, they are looking to seat the final committee evening of June 3rd, election is the 4th. We are having one last information session this coming Thursday evening, it will be at Peabody at 7:15. Unfortunately, one of our first, a couple of our first announcements went out before we realized we had to change the location, so if you've heard that it's at Sandborne at 7, it's not anymore, it's at Peabody at 7:15. We are gonna make signs for the door of Sandborne, and Court has also offered to be at Sandborne at 7 to redirect people if they show up at the wrong place, so thank you.
You're putting a lot of thousands of cars and go, wow.
I know, wow, lots of people are interested in this. So, if anybody shows up at Sandborne, Court will help to send them over to Peabody, we'll do one last info session, we'll see if there's anyone else out there who still has questions about this, and then the election is on the 4th. I think we should all be individually sending out emails to our own networks of people, just to remind them that there is a special election on the 4th, and everybody should get out and vote. And we've been sending word of this information session pretty much through all of our channels, thank you to Court and Cynthia, who've been running with the communication on that one, and it's being announced all over the place, particularly through a lot of. and it's being announced all over the place, particularly through a lot of town channels, not just school channels, so trying to make sure that everybody knows. If you have any more questions, you can come out the 30th. And I think that's about it. Good. Quick update on CMS.
Sure.
And then we'll hand it over to Jared again for the budget stuff on CPS.
So variance report for CPS, just like the high school, we're in really good shape right now, still evaluating all of the numbers and everything. We should be able to prepay some tuitions, we should be able to put monies back into circuit breaker. There are, that number does stick out, but there is a number of things that are gonna come through in the next month or so, definitely some IT, some legal, some specialty contract services, some more supplies and materials that have not been encumbered, some maintenance items, so this number will go down. I do not anticipate this time next year coming to you with such a high number, but again, I don't know what I don't know.
Right.
You, you mentioned IT a couple of times tonight, is this system-wide networking? Is this desktop upgrades?
It's a lot of the desktop, it's a lot of the laptop initiative, and they're also in the 1,000 and then in the 3,000, I think they're, oh, I'm sorry, the 4,000. In the past, I think they've, they've done a lot of their spending, believe it or not, in May and June, so next year we'll, we'll sort of get them out of that habit, because they in the past kinda didn't have, they had a budget, but it was frozen until they opened